Chairman.
Commissioner Winskott.
Commissioner Leiter.
Commissioner Songstad.
Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Frankenbach.
Everyone is here except for Mr. Stoltz. You have a quorum? Any announcements?
The only announcement I have is that, so this morning, Mr. Stoltz and Chairman Trinan were reappointed for their terms, so they'll serve another three years starting September 1st. Sorry, October 1st.
October 1st.
They were due to expire. Commissioners decided to reappoint those two commissioners.
What's that, a four-year term?
Three-year term.
Three-year?
So there'll be two more that expire next year and two more the year after. So then, I think it's, I'd have to look at my spreadsheet. My picture is Don and...
I expire next year. Absolutely. I expire.
Can't have that.
Promising.
All right, we'll move to the consent agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of August 1st, 2023. Any objection to the minutes approval?
No.
Hearing none. Minutes of August 1st, 2023 are approved. We'll move to the workshop action items. File AM 0010-23, comprehensive map amendment. Applicants are requesting a comprehensive map amendment from ag forest land to rural residential. Lots are 12.76 and 6.28 acres. Harvest zone AF20, project located off Baldy Mountain Road. Section 12, township 57 North, range 3 West, Bozy Meridian. And we have a staff report?
Yes.
We do have a staff report. I'm not sure that we quite have a presentation that's operating. Good evenings, Commissioners. Daniel Riff, planning staff for the record. We're here to discuss AM file 0010-23, ag forest land to rural residential is the request this evening. So before we get started, there is a correction in the staff report. If you turn to page eight, under the population section. In the staff comment, it notes that Bonner County is awaiting the results of the 2020 census data. That is not true. We do have that data. We've received it. And to amend that section of the comprehensive plan analysis, the data indicates that the demand for housing and jobs will continue to trend upward in both the unincorporated and incorporated areas of Bonner County. This is the only correction to the staff report. So Bonner County by his code 12216 tells us, "Staff and governing bodies shall review the particular facts and circumstances with each proposal submitted and shall determine whether there is adequate evidence that the proposal is in accordance with the general and the specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. This request was reviewed against implementation component and the land use component of the comprehensive plan." So the map is right there. It is the current land use designation for these parcels in this proposal, which is ag forest land. The ag forest land designation recognizes areas where steamer slopes prevail, 30% or greater, and the transportation is provided by private roads or US Forest Service or state roads. Urban services are not available and residential development challenges are present due to slow or soil conditions, hazardous areas, and lack of police or fire services. Applicants have proposed to go to rural residential. In order to achieve this, the area, the properties must provide for residential development in areas where urban services are not available and slopes may vary up to 30%. These areas include hazardous areas, critical wildlife habitats, where lower density can reduce the potential impacts to resources and exposure to loss of property or lives. Small-scale agricultural uses and residential developments are permitted. So a little summary of the project here. This is the puzzle here. We see on the right on the map, the applicant is requesting the comprehensive plan map amendment from an ag forest land to rural residential. The proposal is for three lots that were planted prior to the adoption of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan land use section 2005. Historically, the parcels had a comprehensive plan designation of rural. Combined, the three lots total approximately 25 acres, and the project is adjacent to Baldy Mountain Road. So background on this site, there's three planted lots. One of the lots is 12.76 acres approximately. There's two others that are approximately 6.2 acres. It's currently zoned AF20 with the land use designation of ag forest land. Access is Baldy Mountain Road, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained 60-foot wide paved and gravel right-of-way. In addition to the northeast parcel that's accessed by Baldy, or sorry, Baldy Drive, which is a 60-foot privately owned and maintained right-of-way. So some environmental features that are found on this property does contain absolets that range from 0 to 30% and greater. The site does not contain any mapped wetlands and does not contain mapped waterfront or streams. The three parcels are in special flood hazard zone X. Individual services that are available to one of the parcels currently and possibly to the other two are an individual well, individual septic system. Fire protection is West Side Fire District, Powers Northern Lights, natural gases, Avista Utilities. And it's within Lake Pontonary School District number 84. So currently, the parcel to the northeast is developed with a single-family dwelling as served by a private well and an individual septic system. In addition, Avista Utilities provides natural gas to the properties and Northern Lights Incorporated provides electricity. Public services afforded to the properties are Bonner County Sheriff, West Side Fire District, Bonner County Road and Bridge Department, Lake Pontonary School District, and their transportation district. And the parcels are within the Dover City of area impact. So back to the access to the parcels or the proposal itself. The proposal is adjacent to Baldy Mountain Road, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained paved and gravel 60-foot right-of-way. Approximately five miles of Baldy Mountain Road is currently county-maintained and approximately three miles of it is paved. The proposal is less than a quarter mile from where the pavement ends and the gravel starts. The land use component of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan, Bonner County Proposed Land Use Matrix Table for General Transportation Criteria recognizes that public rights of ways, paved or gravel, meet the appropriate international fire code standard and are appropriate services for rural residential designation. The gravel maintained portion of Baldy Mountain Road continues for approximately one mile west of this proposal. And that's indicated by that green line on the map of the county maintenance. So as mentioned earlier, if we look at the screen in the top right-hand corner, that is our slope layer that we look at. And then on the bottom right-hand of the screen is our soil layer. So as mentioned earlier, the proposal does contain slopes that are mapped from 0 to 30% or greater. Approximately five of the acres, of the 25 acres is mapped at slopes at 30% or greater, with most of the acreage having a map slope between 20, or sorry, 15 and 30% grade. Therefore, the map slopes of 30% or greater are not a prevailing feature of this proposal. The soils that are found on the property are from the Pontonary soils, and they're suitable for timber production, grazing, hay, and pasture. This series of soils is classified as non-prime farmland access, or sorry, areas within soil type can be used for home sites. These are the following agencies that were routed for comment. Idaho Department of Water Resources, Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, all responded, and these letters are attached in your files this evening. Idaho Department, or sorry, Idaho Department of Fish and Game replied with no comment, and we did not hear back from the other agencies. Public comments did come in on this file. Those letters are all included in your files this evening. The overlining concerns were about wildlife, development, property values, vacation rentals, traffic, cost of infrastructure, and parcel size. That concludes my presentations, Commissioners. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Have any questions of staff?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Daniel, did Rowan Bridge make a comment on this file?
We did not receive a comment from Rowan Bridge.
Any other questions for staff? If not, we'll have a presentation by the applicant.
Thank you. My name is Brian Quayle, 606 South Olive, Sandpoint, and I'm representing the applicants. There is one other correction on the staff report. The name's Brian, not Brain, so...
Well...
I get called a few things, but...
You're a brain in my eyes, Brian.
Oh, thanks, Daniel. So as presented by staff and as detailed in the staff report, this request will bring the subject properties into compliance with the comprehensive plan. Past designations by the county has mistakenly generalized the area into ag forest, whereas there's certainly some larger parcels off to the west and to the north. We also have to the west, south, and east, much smaller parcels. So whereas there are bedrock outcrops, as staff had mentioned, they are limited in area and contain the 30% slopes. There are multiple buildable benches within the property, providing for home sites and also for outbuildings. The property is not prime farmland and is of only moderate timber production. The property is served by the Fire District, has access to power, is located on the existing school bus route, which is Baldy Road, which is, as staff mentioned, a county-maintained roadway, and even has natural gas service up to the property. That's something that much of the county doesn't have. Therefore, when the factual information is taken a look at and is applied to the comprehensive plan, a rural residential designation fits. The existing ag forest designation does not fit. We ask that you update the 2008 decision and reflect the area and grant the request to come into compliance with the comprehensive plan. Thank you, and any questions?
No. I have a couple. The parcel directly to, I guess that's the east of the parcel, the blue area, the rural residential?
Mm-hmm.
Is that owned by the city of Sandpoint?
A large portion of it is, yes.
That's rural residential?
Well, it's not right next to it. The shooting range is up there.
Which is on...
Yeah. The shooting range is city...
Have you looked at the parcels that are around the subject property? It seems to be that, looking at the maps, a lot of those are five-acre parcels. Is that true?
Correct.
And that's true, the property is directly across the street?
I believe so. If the parcel map is brought up, I can answer it better. That would be correct. If you look at for comparison, on the subject properties, the two smaller ones on the right-hand side of the image, those are six-acre parcels. So that gives you a size comparison. For the ones across the road, off to the southwest, it would be, and to the southeast.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Quayle?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Quayle, I see in the report there's a land capability report, because I read through the public comments and stuff, and they're worried about septics and stuff like that. I didn't know, and I'll look through the land capability report. Are we aware of any issues for nitrate-loaded areas up there because of the septics? Are we aware of any?
No. And what I looked for up there on the benches is suitable depth of soil for the septic systems, rather than just chasing the bedrock and outcropping. I didn't see anything that would indicate a nitrate problem. I know of none up there. The drainfields will have to be sited appropriately because of the bedrock outcrops, but they're eligible for the drainfields now. And the subject area to the west that we brought in is of the same soil types and the same formations as of the site that has the roads on it. And when you go up to the road cuts and you look at the previous logging operation that was done there, you can see the soil types quite well. And it's glacial alluvium that, because of the ridge there, got deposited.
Mr. Quayle, so I missed it spaced out or something on the staff presentation. So your entire area or the applicant's area is in the purple?
Correct.
All of the purple area?
Correct.
And it's got three divisions?
A total of three, not three divisions. Those are three existing parcels.
Three existing parcels. The largest parcel is how many acres?
12.
So the other two parcels are probably close to five?
Six.
Six? And, no, I'll wait on my next question with staff, I guess. So the north of Mount Baldy Road there, those long parcels, how many acres are those approximately?
I'm not sure. I think you're referring to the triangular parcels of...
Is that about to northeast of the proposal? Northwest.
Northwest?
These parcels are northwest, east? Yes. So while staff's answered, open their door. So it appears to me visually that Mount Baldy is some kind of a demarcation line between the smaller five-acre parcels, and is that because of county zoning designations difference?
So through some of my research, I discovered that this area, I'm not sure if you can see my mouse, Commissioner.
Yeah.
This area was all planted in the late 60s, and there's, well, some adjustments made and parcel sizes probably split between then and the adoption of the code.
Including all the five-acre parcel south of the road there?
Correct.
So they've been around for a long time?
Since the late 60s.
So no significant zoning changes since the 60s?
Only by the county initiated one in 2008. Other than that, this whole area had the land use designation of just rural. There wasn't rural residential prior to 2008. There's a history behind that. So this area was just deemed rural.
Okay, so it was, I guess, modified in 2008?
Correct.
To rural?
To ag forest land.
Ag forest.
And then if we come back to here, you can see, this is, these are the parcels you're inquiring about that are in that ag forest land designation.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So in this chart, the yellow is suburban, right?
Correct.
And the blue then is rural residential?
Correct.
Most of which is a shooting range?
Correct.
Quite a bit of them.
Just a portion of it.
There's the map. This is the shooting range.
Any questions?
The applicant here picks back up the ag forest land designation.
Right.
And these are 20s up in that area.
It used to be a gravel and sand pit. It was a gravel pit, then it was a sand pit, then they farmed some oil-contaminated soils in it. It's been used for various things, but right now, I think the only thing they're using it for is the shooting range on the east side. And one of the concerns with the designation that was done in 2008 is that when a jurisdiction zones something into noncompliance, then the intent is, is that those are going to go away. Those are grandfathered uses now, and they can only be in existence as long as they stay within the grandfathering parameters. And Planning and Zoning 101 will teach you that grandfathers pass away, and we lose grandfather rights over time. And so one of the questions then become, when the county in 2008 made a big swath of ag forest and made everybody noncompliant with the comprehensive plan, it's like, well, who's going to make the move to make those parcels go away? And they won't. The reality is, is that they won't. So I would suggest that there was maybe some other reasonings behind it, but to put us all into noncompliance isn't good planning practices from my point of view.
Last question, has the ownership changed since 2008?
Yes.
And that the most recent change?
The most recent, when it occurs? Last year?
Last year, okay. So a new owner's bought...
On the 12, prior to that, I can't tell you when the wheats...
That's fine.
The north has. The 12 acres were purchased because the wheats and the washloggers who are applying for this want to control what's happening next to them. And also, I'll say that currently, the only access to that lot is off of Baldy Road. And by bringing the property into compliance and allowing us to go forward with the eventual plan, there would be one additional lot within it. The 12 would be split into two sixes, but the access is going to be off of Bald Eagle Drive and not Baldy. And that's what you want. You want access off of Bald Eagle Drive and not Baldy Mountain on this. To build a road off of Baldy would pretty much obliterate that whole bottom end of the property.
Mr. Quayle, or staff, or frankly, the landowner, or anybody that can answer this, Mr. Quayle?
Why don't we give questions to Mr. Quayle, please?
Okay. Well, I'm just curious. You mentioned that there had been some oil contamination found, and is the source of that contamination known?
Well, first of all, that's not on this property. It's on the city's property. And that soil no longer exists on there. It was taken, if you know where the old refinery was, across from the Safeway store, the current Safeway store downtown Sandpoint, there used to be a refinery across the road, and there were contaminated soils in there that the DEQ and the landowners removed a few years back, and it was taken up there and farmed until it was, the contaminants, the volatiles, went off into the atmosphere, then they hauled the material off of the site.
Thank you, sir.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions of Mr. Quayle?
I have a question. I lived on Upland Drives. I thought Upland was the end of natural gas. And they subsequently ran it up Baldy?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You did? When?
Twenty years ago.
Oh, okay. I was always under the impression of Upland was as far as it went.
No, if you asked me if I'd do it again, I'd never do it again.
Right. So how far up does it go?
I think that was the last area that I...
I believe that's the end of it. And you can see the risers coming up.
Okay. Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Quayle. Are there any other speakers for the applicant? Sure.
My name's Alan Andrews. I live at 16735 Baldy Mountain Road, which is about four miles past this, further up west on the road. I'm way at the end. I was the one that purchased this property and others above it about 23, 24 years ago, and I put in this road from the Baldy because the city that owns the, I believe it's 110 or 90 acres to this east of it.
Right there.
Okay. They did have a road at one time which was called the Jeep Trail Road. Everybody old up here knows what I'm talking about. And it ran through the city property and not up the road all the way around. That was cut off 25, 26 years ago, and all the people on the hill were not allowed to get access anymore to their property. They were actually landlocked by the city illegally. And when I purchased this property, I knew it would be a long battle in court, so I just decided to put in a half a mile of road myself. That's why you see the parcels that are existing in there. And this particular 12-acre parcel, a guy, I believe it's Switzerland, owned it forever. And I contacted him probably three to five times by mail, never heard a word back from him. Tried to purchase the property myself, never heard a word. So the problem is, as they were mentioning, if you show the other map that shows the rocks on that, there you go. Right where it enters on the Baldy on that 12 acres, there's no access and there never will be. It's 25 to 30 feet of solid rock. You'd have to blast some kind of entry, which I imagine would be astronomically ridiculous. As well as you have the parcel right next to you, you're not going to be able to blast rock too easily. So there is no other access to that property. The only access would be through the road, the existing road on the parcels to the right of it. It's, otherwise, there's no access to it.
I have a question.
Sure.
Will there, if you divide the 12 acres into two, is that road, Bald Eagle Road, is that going to access?
Yes, because the parties that purchased that 12 are the existing parcels to the right of that.
So they would give an easement or whatever?
Yes. They could incorporate it into the road association.
And you can't get access off the Bald Eagle?
No.
You've got 12.
I fought for about five years in court.
No, I mean, off Bald Eagle?
No.
No?
No, because you have to be an owner of property that got in 25 years ago when I put that road in, because I brought in natural gas, power. I put a whole road in for about a mile. And I offered that to every party involved, and nobody took up on it. So I had to go to court on that and fight about it. They had access to it if they wanted to get in, and nobody wanted to get in 20 years later. And this is the only parcel that I know of that, right now, is kind of what you might say landlocked, but it has no option because they had an opportunity for years to get into it. And now these...
Are you talking about the 12-acre parcel?
Yeah, the 12-acre parcel.
But there will be future access off Bald Eagle Road to the 12-acre parcel, even if it's split in two?
Yes, because the two parties that are in the road association currently that own the property to the right are the owners. So they can incorporate that into the Bald Eagle Estates.
I take it you're in favor of this proposal?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why not, because otherwise you have a piece of property that's never going to have legal access. It's already been in court. They're not going to get it. The only way you're going to get it is to own it. And I think in this case here, septic is available in most of that area. I didn't run into any septic area that wasn't. There is no water. The timber's small. There's not a lot of big timber up there. Wildlife is on that whole mountain, so it doesn't affect anything on that. There is no water on that particular parcel. And if you could go back to the rock one more time, please? If you look at that parcel, the rock outclave is minimal compared to all the other parcels. It's not that many places, except for the main road, and a few parcels in the middle, you can see there's some rock enclave there. But overall, if you look at the rest of the map, it's comparatively light. So the soil is nominal up there. There's nothing fancy about that soil, just regular soil up here. And I don't see any reason why this should be excluded, because here's an absolute opportunity for that parcel to be used and not isolated for whatever various reasons. And you're only talking about it's going to just be incorporated into the road use. So there's no extra roads to be put in. There's no extra, anything really has to be done.
So, Mr. Andrews, do you own the two parcels to the east there or to the...
No.
Okay. So you have some kind of an agreement with those two owners for easement rights to your parcel?
No, I don't own property there anymore. I did.
Well, so there is an easement right?
Yes.
Already in existence?
Yes.
To access that larger parcel if it's divided?
Yes.
Well, all three of the parcels are under common ownership, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The only thing is, the only way that would ever get access, though, would have to be purchased by these parties on the right.
Got you.
Yeah.
Is that road, Bald Eagle?
Bald Eagle, yeah, Bald Eagle.
Is it, provide access to properties to the north and west of these?
Not to the west, to the north.
Just to the, up past?
Yes.
There are other properties up there.
Yes.
Use this as an easement to get them?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else speak in favor of the proposal?
Mr. Chairman? I think I need to disclose that it's just Don. I mean, this used to be Alan Andrews' property.
Yes.
And I think we sold it for you eons ago.
Well, it's been sold a couple of times.
Yeah. But the first time was when we were involved.
Yeah.
And so I'm not aware or know these current owners, but I'm somewhat familiar with the property.
All right, anybody here to oppose a project?
Are we in public discussion?
So it's officially open?
I think so.
Okay. It was officially opened and it's...
Okay, well, we're opening a public hearing. We've heard from the applicant, and we'll hear if anybody else that's in favor of the proposal?
We have people online.
Veteran favor?
Veteran in favor?
They've had their hand up. I don't know if they're in favor or not.
Nope. He just took his hand down.
Oh.
So probably not in favor.
So no other people that's speaking in favor of the proposal? Any people opposed to the proposal? Anybody online?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and...
Please identify yourself and give your address, if you would, please.
Is this me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm Curtis.
Hi, Curtis Everly. I live up Baldy Mountain Road on 236 Larson Ranch Lane. I am in opposition to this application. After listening to Brian and Alan Andrews and looking through this application, the first thing that pops into my mind is you already have three lots, and there's already an easement that's been granted from Bald Eagle Estates to the twelve-acre parcels. So I'm not sure why this is even a consideration. There's already three lots, and there's access to that property. So my fear is, is that what's happening here is that they're going to try to turn this into, you know, four or five parcels. So that's right off the top after listening to Brian and Alan and reading the application. I am in opposition to this application. I'd like to point out some of the errors in the noticing and with the application itself. One, the agency routing memo was sent to the Dover Bay Area City of Impact when the property is in the Sandpoint, Sandpoint's area of city impact. And according to Sandpoint's comprehensive plan, the area for this application is classified as very rural. In Sandpoint's comp plan, the context area of very rural means, quote, "The rural character of these lands provides many benefits to residents, including undeveloped view sheds, opportunity for recreational access, and a clear boundary-limiting development, which contributes to our geographic authenticity and sense of place," unquote. Two, on the county website, the maps provided didn't include all of the parcels included in this application. It's summertime, and I was gone last Thursday through this Monday, and when I looked at the staff report, it was completely different than the maps I had originally looked at. Repeatedly, only one parcel has been shown as the subject parcel, and that's the larger one. It looks like the other two parcels included in this application were added at a later time than when the maps were completed, because the additional two parcels have been handwritten in as additions. This is so that they can further develop into even smaller parcels down the road, I'm afraid. And as I said, there's already an easement granted to the larger parcel that exists. Three, the planning staff report states that as of August eighth, no public comments were received for this file, yet I've confirmed with several of my neighbors that they did indeed comment prior to the August eighth and using Bonnet County's website link for this file. Just now, we are hearing that there is public comment, yet we don't have access to this. I haven't been able to read what those comments are. Four, under property rights, the staff report states, "Planning has received letters on how this amendment could impact their property rights, yet there's nothing addressed regarding their comments." Perhaps this was a misprint in the staff report. As a resident of this area, I encourage you to deny this application until the correct routing memo can be sent out, until it can be assured the public comment link was functioning properly, and until the public has sufficient time to review the corrected maps for this application. I also encourage you to deny this because this area was designated to be ag forest. And I'm in disagreement with Brian on how he points out that everything around it is smaller and that this isn't really ag forest. It's in the comprehensive plan, and this parcel clearly falls under that area. The owners just purchased this property in November and within six months have applied for this comp plan amendment, and that will be followed by a rezone. I question if either of the applicants even plan to reside full-time in the amended area. Time and again, those of us who want rural character of this county to be attacked have asked the county to resist spot zoning. In the case of this area, steep slopes exist above the gravel line in all of Baldy Mountain, and there is only one road going in and one road going out. Adding density to steep fire risk areas designated ag forest goes against the county's comprehensive plan and poses a potential fire hazard and danger hazard for our Baldy community. Finally, while the application is incorrect, and that the application is incorrect, and only the first mile of Baldy is maintained by the county that is up just past Larson Ranch Lane, that's because myself and my neighbors formed an LLC and contributed a substantial amount to cost share with the county to improve this mile of road, to support the existing population. This neighborhood did not contribute cost sharing, so the applicant and others could use it as a, it as a reason to increase density. And FYI, the bus only goes up to the paved, or the pavement ends on Baldy, so there is no bus. It's not on a bus route. People have to walk down the gravel to the pavement there at Turtle Rock and Janish, so that's incorrect. And so, in closing, please deny or at least reschedule this application until the correct routing and public information portions are completed correctly so that me and my neighbors can comment fully and understand what the impact is on our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have read a lot of public comments, all the public comments that have been submitted. Let me ask you a question. You live on Larson Ranch Road. Isn't it true that there's a number of five-acre parcels on Larson Ranch Road?
That is true. Back, it was probably about fifteen or twenty years ago, we actually came before the Planning and Zoning Commission when Sharice Moore and another person wanted to break that twenty-five-acre parcel down into five-fives. The Planning and Zoning Commission, what they, what they took to the county commissioners was that it didn't follow the comprehensive plan and that it shouldn't be allowed. And that was actually ruled on. You guys can go back and look at that. And then it was me and a handful of neighbors that took that to the county. And then after that, Sharice Moore took that, and other parties took that, filed the lawsuit saying that their constitutional rights have been violated. And whammo, we've got five-acre parcels here on Larson. And if you actually look at the zoning on that, the parcels are kind of ridiculous because they all fall in on top of each other, and some of them have been undeveloped because they're just not really sellable. So I couldn't, I wouldn't use that as a, as a, what do you call it? You know, looking around the area, and there's a bunch of five-acre parcels. That was kind of something that happened, and I thought it was actually kind of egregious since the county Planning and Zoning Commission actually ruled in our favor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other public comments and opposition?
Nobody else online?
Okay, staff, do you want to address the city, the area of city impact issue?
If we close the public comment, Commissioner?
Is there anybody else who wants to speak?
Not online.
Okay, we'll close the public comments.
Okay, so to tackle the first one, the area of city impact, it's right there on the board.
There's still going to be rebuttal from the applicant. That's part of public...
No.
Do you have any rebuttal?
Yeah, we have a few comments, but if you want to have staff address the issues first...
Yeah, I'd like the staff to address their city of impact.
Yeah, just leave the testimony open is what I would suggest.
So, Commissioner, if we take a moment to look at the screen there and where the proposal's at, it says on the border of the city of Dover, city of impact, and city of Sandpoint. The city of Sandpoint ends at the city property there where that gun range is. I, too, was surprised that it was not in the city of Sandpoint's area of impact, but actually, if in fact, in Dover's. And if Jenna can take a moment to click on, or Jake?
On the parcel?
Yeah. For the area of city impact?
Yes.
Oh, mine does work there. Okay. So you can see clearly it's in Dover, and we click over here.
It's me.
Do I not have control?
No.
I was fooled, believing I had control of that. Anyway, we clearly see it's in the city of Dover, and it is on the border there.
I've clicked on this parcel right now, and it's...
City of Sandpoint. So that's the other part, the impact.
There you go.
So that's where the border is. So that's why I went to the city of Dover. To get back to the staff report, if you look on page four or five, it clearly states, as of August eighth, 2023, public comments were received for this file. So I'm not sure what staff report the public was looking at. And then, as far as the acreage goes, if they're successful in coming up with a rural residential and the applicant decides to pursue a zone change, which at this point, we don't know they are, the minimum acreage would be five acres for the rural residential designation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Quayle, do you have any...
Yes, I'd like to address a few things. I'll start with the ACI.
Sorry, one other thing that was brought up. Also, the notification, or the noticing, state law requires that everybody within three hundred feet of that proposal be notified by mail. So that's how the notification happens.
Okay.
That's almost right.
Again, Brian Quayle for the record. Let's deal with the area of city impact. I'll emphasize my confidence in it because I was standing at the judge's bench and drew that with Marty Taylor and myself and the judge. And we drew the boundary of the ACI for Sandpoint and Dover because of a court litigation. So it's in Dover's ACI. The, Sandpoint used to have an overlap, and that went away when the judge's decision was made. Let's jump right to the number of lots and the people that are concerned about this becoming four or five more lots. We are interested in a rural designation. We're interested in the rural comp plan designation because we're interested in the rural zoning designation as well. But without the comp plan change, we can't get a zone change. So we have to start with you folks for this stuff. And instead of playing it for everything at once when we don't know which direction things were going to go, we chose to do it a step at a time. So that's why we're here in front of you with what it is. And our plan, we're transparent, too. Our plan is for the twelve-acre to be split equally in half between the Wheat's and the Wolsloggers. And that will create two six-and-a-quarter-acre parcels approximately. So there's one property now that's eligible for a BLP, so we would be creating one additional lot. So the impact that anybody is concerned with and stuff needs to be limited to the one lot more that would be created on it. Let me make a couple of comments about the road, because I think there might be some confusion on that. Excuse me. There was mention about an existing easement. There is no existing easement that serves the large twelve acres right now. The large twelve acres is, only legal access is off of Baldy Mountain Road. And because of the rock formations that are there, it just is not a feasible access. A much better access and a safe access is using Bald Eagle Drive. And with the success of a zone change and splitting the property then into two lots, those two lots will be accessed off of Bald Eagle Drive. So there's multiple steps that will be involved with this for us to get to it. But currently, that twelve-acre piece only can come through solid rock. And like it was mentioned in testimony, blasting and major excavating would have to be done, and that entire hillside would be obliterated in order to get the switchbacks.
So, Brian, even in the graphic, that very northeast corner of the twelve-acre parcel, the road goes across that?
Yes.
Is it within an easement?
I don't know that.
We've got a hitchhiker.
No, that easement was rejected in the court because the parties never responded to the offer. And I actually, that road right there at that corner was an existing Jeep Trail Road. That little slice there is about a quarter acre. We actually had to bring the power around it.
Okay, so there's no easement where that shows physically a road?
No.
All right.
That was Mr. Andrews for the record.
Yes, that was Mr. Andrews. So, okay. So, I mean, just common sense layout, extending that existing lot line or parcel line that's on the east side, extending it to the west, you've got two parcels, and then it seems like it's only a matter of a short distance from that, the way the road wheels its way up the hill.
And we tried to do our homework. We've already, we've not just crawled around on the property, but we've had it surveyed and laid out, so that when I speak of building envelopes, that's just not off the top of my head. I'd like the record to show that, and to address some of the things that were addressed in the public comments, both that were submitted and testified to. But the Wolsloggers are a young local family that chose to be educated in Idaho and remain here to develop their careers and raise a family. They are not from out of the area, and they're not trying to do anything other than to enhance their property by controlling the adjacent property to it. They intend to build their next home on the property. The Wheat's, Angela's from Sandpoint. They don't currently live in Sandpoint, but she was born, raised, I'm not sure if she was born here, she was raised here. The Wheat's are not developers either. Their property is used for some personal enjoyment, and at times, it's leased through an Airbnb type of service. They, too, desire to control the property next to them. So assuming that it's going to be a big development, and we're going to be asking for suburban is off the charts. It's not, it's not there. I've shared with you what we're trying to get to, and this is the path. And one of the reasons why this path made sense to us was that it meets the definitions of your rural residential.
Rural residential is five to ten.
Correct.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Rural residential is five to ten.
Five, ten-acre zone.
Correct. Any other questions for me?
So it can't be further developed?
Correct. It couldn't be...
Nothing below five.
Once it gets divided into the two six-acre parcels, it's done.
Okay. So this may be the proper time to get into this with Brian, with his experience.
Do you have a question for him?
I do. And it's going to help us in deliberation, I believe. Time and time again, when we have a map amendment, the reasoning is the land doesn't fit the existing comp plan designation. This other designation better fits the land. We see it over and over and over again. It's probably the predominant reason why we've seen plan amendments. Where was the disconnect?
I think in the major rezone, and the major redesignation, when that's done, and if you go back and you look at the process for that, I mean, certain individuals show up, but you don't have all the landowners show up. And I think there's a large segment of the population that believes that those that are in the positions that you're in, you should use some certain lines of thought and logic and so forth with your reasoning. And to go up into this area and designate anything, everything into noncompliance just doesn't make logical sense.
We've seen that around the county numerous places.
Yeah, Coca-Cola was another area that you guys got hit with.
Almost every quadrant of the county has areas like that. We also typically see it on the dividing line between designated areas. Because as everybody, even though I've heard, I wasn't part of it, when all that work was done in 2005, four, three, two, and so forth up through 2008, there was no way that the staff or the groups that would do it could go parcel by parcel and see, what does this fit? What does this fit? So it was a broad brush.
Yes.
Which makes sense. But now we deal backwards with parcel by parcel.
Yes.
And you're looking at them in that sense. So that's the dilemma, and this is what we get charged with, saying, well, we shouldn't do it that way, that spot zoning. Cases like this where adjacent to it is a rural residential zone.
Correct. The spot zoning doesn't come into play here.
Thank you for the discussion.
One last question. What's the hurry?
There was none. We were working on it here for several months, and it's now just, we'd like to see things move on.
Any other questions of the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Quayle.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission.
I think you have a hand right there.
For discussion? Do you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I would, if you don't mind. When I purchased these properties, because it was landlocked from the city to me, and I chose what I thought was the easier route, which might not have been, I acquired more property up the hill. And as I did, I had to bring my road and my money and my time. And at the time I did that, all the parcels I owned were zoned at the time, five acres, subdivisible down to five. Then this new ruling came along in 2008, actually, 2005, I think it was. And I had to fight because they tried to make all the property I now had acquired and developed, I had subbed it up into twenties, and then they wanted to go down to forties, I mean, up to forties. I was the... I was the line, that purple, yeah, the purple line that runs down north to south. From the west side of my property was the line of where it was going to be forty zoned. So I got to go from twenties that I already spent time and money developing for years with P&amp;Z's approval, and then they're going to jack me up to forties. I'm going to go bankrupt. So I presented my case to them and they listened to me fortunately. And the main reason they said was the slopes. But if you look at it, I brought in a nice forestry map, topo map, and all the slopes, funny, to the west, I mean, the east of me were greater. And they dinged me, but they could go down to, what was it, fives or tens? And I said, how do you tell me? Because of the slope? And these guys are getting it and I don't because of the slope and my slope's less. And at the time, all this was developed, and I know the history of the Baldi like probably nobody alive. In fact, I put the Larson Ranch road in. And that was 310 acres until it was subbed up into fives. Not all fives, there's larger parcels. But for years and years and years, you could go down to fives. And this piece here being uniquely different is because it was some guy in Switzerland who never responded. He probably didn't even know about what was going on or care. And now, you know, here it is, a piece in the middle sitting there that's been kind of vacated all these years. And for anybody on the Baldi, including the people on Larson Ranch, which I know most of them, who doesn't want to own more to expand your property lines? You're not contracting them, you're expanding them. So instead of that being a six and a six and a 12, it's going to be a 12 and a 12 or 12 and a half and a 12 and a half. That makes all the sense in the world to me for conservation of any sort. If you're going to keep more property, you're not making more homes in there, you're going to make a larger parcel for yourself. Everybody that lives on the Baldi that I know of, if there's a piece comes up next to them, they're going to try to buy it. That's a fact. And it makes all the sense in the world to me that something like this, if they just cut it right down in the middle or in half, they're going to go six and six. What's wrong with that? I can't understand why somebody unless they're thinking there's going to be some Walmart or something going on up there. And I don't see anything like that. That road is a specific road for those parties that live on that road. It's never going to be more. So I just wanted to throw that acreage in there because that was a major factor that, you know, P&amp;Z changed and there's been a lot of change on that. And I think, I'm sorry, what's this commissioner's name?
Davis.
Mr. Davis brought that point up, that you're going to have to go back and forth and readjust certain things because things happen. Nothing's going to remain the same. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
All right, we'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. I looked at this and it seems to me to make a lot of sense. Despite the Ag Forest designation, a lot of land, actual parcels are five acres. I don't see that this is any, this is proved, that this would be any different, would be inconsistent with the character of the area. So I was in favor of this proposal. Anybody else?
I think, I think listening here tonight, I've reached the same conclusion where I'm in favor of it. I'm going to get on my soapbox for a little bit since we're going to start working on the land use in a moment.
Yes.
And when I think about this purely from what we have today in the land use descriptions, rural residential says slopes vary up to 30%. And then Ag Forest says 30% slopes predominate. And I don't necessarily have a problem with using objective measurable criteria like that, but if we're going to do it, we've created a gap there. There's a big gap between nothing above 30% and mostly 30%. And we should be looking at those kinds of things here when we start to work on updating the land use plan here in 15 minutes.
I agree. Anybody else have a comment? If not, entertain a motion.
Sorry, I didn't know you went to the motions so quickly. I guess, I, honest merits, it is merited, but I am really troubled and I think part of the problem, the reason why we're here as a board is to change some very outdated comp plan stuff. We all know that Sandpoint and Bonner County has changed significantly since 2008 or whenever the last comp plan was written. And that's why we're entering into these time-consuming, not only of this board but of staff, these spot changes. And spot changes are problematic. So I guess maybe before my term expires, we can get this comp plan updated and these changes can be made. But, you know, I'm not enamored to vote in favor of a spot change, but I think the merits warranted.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, the comment about the road, the person on the line, one road in, one road out, that is so predominant in Bonner County. Yes, it's a concern. They're private roads, they're privately maintained, they're not wide boulevards going up into the hills. It is the way it is. And I don't know, I don't know what to, how to get by that. And it certainly, the prevalence of them in the county, it's not something now that I don't think would be justified to start saying, well, no, this, this kind of road we can't have anymore, any more lots on it or any parcels. So it's a dilemma. But I don't see it as justifying not approving this. So just want to throw that in.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have a motion?
I'll just briefly say I'm in agreement to the reasons that I am is because it's already almost fives anyway, and it's adjacent to an enormous section of rural, and rural five. So I'm in agreement.
All right, we have a motion?
I'm in agreement.
Yep.
Who gets there first?
Oh, yeah, I got it. Debbie's got it.
You got it?
Oh, you got it?
I got it.
Go.
I move to recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners on this project file AM 0010-23, requesting a comprehensive plan amendment from Ag Forest land to rural residential on a plus or minus 25 acres generally located in sections 12, Township 57, North Range 3, West Boise Meridian, Bonner County, Idaho. Finding that it is in accord with the general and specific objectives of the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan and Bonner County Revised Code as enumerated in the following conclusions of law and based upon the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conclusions of law as set forth in the staff report or as amended during this hearing and direct planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this motion. Have the chair sign and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in a taking of private property.
Second. Mr. Layla, seconds. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Couldn't we do a CUP for your school? Could we do a CUP for your school a couple of years ago? I don't remember that now.
You've been here before, I know that.
Yeah.
Your what?
Where is this?
Yeah.
The whole family.
Yeah, we'll recess for a while.
I see y'all.[1170.58]
All right, we're gonna call the Planning Commission back to order. And we'll move to the discussion of the vacation rental ordinance and software. Jake?
Yep, so I've since the board requested a workshop and that's been scheduled for the third year of late this month. Since then, I've dove all the deeper into like a financial analysis. We had put together some preliminary numbers, but I hadn't done like a full assessment. I made a handful of assumptions and created a calculator tool to help kind of estimate with a large number of assumptions built into it. I also went and visited with City of Sandpoint to see how Deckard is doing for them now that they've been in it for a year. And then last Thursday, I went down to City of Coeur d'Alene and met with their team that manages short terminals and kind of talking about their ordinance and then their experience with Granicus. So I also reached out to Deckard and Granicus and got updated proposals to try to compare like-for-like services as best we can. And those proposals, I put in your drive as well as the updated calculator tool that I built. I also reached out to Google OS and I have a meeting scheduled Thursday morning if I remember right.
Thursday morning?
Thursday, yes, I have to tell you this at some time. If anyone else wants to attend, it's Thursday, sorry, Thursday afternoon at 2:00.
Yeah, if you could move that to like the morning, I'd love to attend it. I can't do it at 2:00.
I can reach out to them. They had some availability in the morning. I have a commitment at 11:00 that day, so if I can get it sometime between 9:30 and 11:00, I'll see if I can reschedule it.
Okay.
Some kind of food for thought, City of Coeur d'Alene has a round the same number of short terminals as Bonner County does, and it makes sense, they're bound in the same population sizes as they're accounting, right, for that city. So they have about 600 permitted and about 180 or so right now that are unpermitted. So they're at about a 75% compliance rate. Their ordinance is very different than ours where they don't have a whole lot of standards. They don't do any onsite visits. They don't do any compliance related. They don't go review how many bedrooms or count anything like that. They don't have any parking standards either. So theirs is, it's very different and less restrictive than our county ordinance is. Their cost is about $50,000 a year for Granicus, and that's about what we've got a quote from Granicus for about $40,000 and some change. They do recommend permit software. They also recommend the registration portal. They think that was the big indicator. They did a really big outreach campaign, both with their software solution and just personally. They added it to like utility bills and other things going out to citizens, especially the 24 hours, 24/7 hotline. They get a number of non-short-term rental-related complaints, you know, just fireworks and other just normal city complaints through that that are not really, not what it's meant for, but they also see a large number of, well, not a large, a significant amount of complaints coming through there. You guys want to look over the calculators that I built?
I'm just looking at that.
Yes.
The financial analysis?
Yeah. Everything that's like the orangish color is like an input field, so that will modify all of the outputs. I can't scroll out too far. And I've built like what, 65%, 75%, 85% compliance rate would look like as far as revenue, like fee revenue would go. I estimated right now about a one-third cost of the revenue would go to staff, would we would need to cover staff time in processing these, so then we have an estimated software budget. When I talked to Granicus, they are much larger than Deckard as far as like number of clients that they have. They have assured that they can get to a 65% compliance rate within a year, where Deckard is much smaller, that I think they only have 150 to 200 clients. I don't recall exactly the number versus 1,500 plus that Granicus. And they assured me that their normal is 85% compliance, so they assume a much greater compliance rate. Again, City of Coeur d'Alene's about a 75%. So I think that's a good ballpark, it stays somewhere in the middle. But I just kind of correlated colors to green, yellow, red, as far as, yeah, what's the likelihood? I always, everyone's at a caution. They also estimate that our total number of short terminals is about 650. I think Chair Song said, reached out to Granicus, and it's somewhere between 650 and 850, and they're not going to do the homework to figure out exactly how many we have. That's all part of the fee base, right? So they take the total number of listings and use a calculator tool. Okay, we normally see about X number of percentage, that's where they get the 650 from. So more often than not, you have homeowners posting on several different sites and adequate to give a total number of listings of around 1,100. We estimated some renewal rates of 40, 50, and 80% based on just a conversation I had with other municipalities that govern this. And when you implement software solutions, that's kind of the going rate. I also, the big assumption on this is that we moved to a one-year renewal. If we stay with a two-year renewal, I think it's fairly, we won't break even, just to say flatly. We also, if you didn't know, in our current fee schedule, if you have the same, if you have two vacation rentals on a single property, you get a discount, so it's $100 or $200 for the first and 120 for the second if applied for at the same time. We don't, we only see about a 9% of our total permit right now that have utilized that, so I kind of built that into the model and to the fee calculations, assuming that 9% exists.
Yeah.
Yes.
For some reason, I pulled this one up online and in our drive. Mine's different than that. Like on the top left, where it says vacation rental fees, fee 200, proposed fee 200?
Oh, yeah.
Mine says 285.
Oh, I was playing with some numbers, I must have dropped it in there.
Oh, okay.
Again, so the fee right now is the last, the proposed, this is where we can make some changes. If we change it to 285, which is what City of Coeur d'Alene charges, and we got rid of this like discount on the second one, and then we moved the biennial to, right now they charge 180, then it modifies our outputs out here, so.
Oh, okay. So after the first year of implementation, if it's implemented, you'll adjust the fees according to the results of the?
It's up to the board to adjust the fees.
Well, okay, but you'll make recommendations.
Right, we can propose to the board to say, okay, this is what we expected, this is what we actually got, so we can adjust the fees either up or down based on.
So just to be clear, is this, there's a difference to me out, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the term enterprise fund?
Yeah.
Versus a tax?
So the.
Is this going to be a fee or a tax?
Neither. It's a fee base.
Okay.
It's not an enterprise fund. So the planning department entire budget falls under the general fund. The idea is to get about a 70 to 80% coverage of our revenues to our expenses, and that's on total revenue versus total expense. I think a program like this should be 100% covered, especially given the cost of the software.
Your, your fee revenue calculations, are those based on the current fees or your proposed fees?
The proposed fees.
Proposed fees.
So as we modify the proposed fees, we can say, okay, what is $300 of this due versus $200 of that, right?
Got it. So you're proposing, well, at least in the version we have, we get rid of that second permit discount?
Yeah, I mean, we can play around with it too, and that's why I built the calculator, because it tries to answer all the what-if questions, so, okay, well, what if this? So let's change it and see what happens. So, yes.
This appears to be a better way than trying to figure out how many bathrooms and bedrooms houses have.
Well, that's not, well, not mutually exclusive. That's not, we, no, this is enforcement, this is not.
I understand that enforcement for everybody, but then with the enforcement, is the enforcement by the codes of the county?
Yes.
Which we can change, or we can recommend changes.
But I think the dilemma where I'm going with this is when we were having all of these discussions, chasing our tail a little bit, there was no basis to justify decision-making. And so this, I think, was, from my perspective, a result of giving us a basis of decision-making rather than swag.
I think we're still left with the dilemma of how do you determine occupancy, allowable occupancy rates for any given permit application?
Yeah, let me, let me see if I can address that. That's not being addressed by this at all.
Right.
So what I thought we had, what I had recommended and what I thought we had agreed to was that we would propose to the county commissioners an enforcement mechanism, and that if they weren't interested in having an enforcement mechanism, or they weren't interested in going with one of these companies, then there was really no point in us modifying the ordinance. So if this, if we can get this to fly, and I have a number of thoughts about this tonight, but then we would then address the other issues, which are the regulatory issues, how many occupants, what kind of parking, what other kind of regulations do we think are appropriate? But until we have an enforcement mechanism, I think we're just chasing our tail, as Mike said. So that's what this is about. I have a number of concerns about the analysis that Jake's done here. I'm a little disturbed by the fact that we've already presented to the county commissioners our recommend, not a recommendation, but at least an inquiry to them, based on about 1,100 rental units and 30% compliance, and now we're using numbers that are far less than that, 650. And I'll get to the Granicus one in a minute. So I, when I saw the 650, and if you read the Granicus proposal, they identified 1,235 listings, and they, then they came up with 650 estimated actual rental units because they have duplicates and this and that. So it looked to me like that was simply a derived number. They just put a percentage on it. But I didn't, you know, that was my assumption, and I don't like to make assumptions, so I called them. And that's exactly what they did. They applied, they said it would range from 52 to 62%, they thought, and that their reasonable estimate would be 55%. And I talked to Granicus, which had given us the 1,100 and something, and I said, do you have a number that's actual number of rental units? Because their software, I think, is more sophisticated than Deckard, they do. And their actual number of actual rental units at the time, again, all these are all snapshots in time, but at the time they did their analysis was 865. And that was a real number. So what I, what I propose is that we modify this spreadsheet to present information on the best case, worst case scenario. And we can use the Deckard estimate, which I think is fairly worthless, and we can use the, as the worst case and the best case, being the Granicus, 865, and I think that's pretty conservative, and move forward with that. I also believe that, and I haven't had a chance to look at some of the modifications that Jake did after we talked today a couple times, we need to have in here as part of this presentation, our recommendation as to the fee schedule that should be implemented. The 285 comes from Coeur d'Alene. That's the, that's the, that's what they use for their permit. They have an interesting situation in which they really don't regulate much, except you have to get a permit. It's really weird, but it's 285.
They also don't do onsite visits, so their personnel cost is less.
It's purely a permit.
So like, right now, we visit every single one, right, before we give them a permit. City of Coeur d'Alene doesn't have that, call it human capital cost.
Yeah, what they do is they require a parking plan, and I, you know, they encourage people not to park on the street. But, so 285, I, you know, I've talked to a number of jurisdictions, 285 is pretty low, based on my research, and $150 renewal fee is definitely low. You've got to remember that these short-term rentals are, they're charging $200, $300 a night up.
Yeah.
So, I mean, these fees are insignificant in terms of what the short-term rental can generate annual fee. So, I mean, I think the renewal fee should be closer to, you know, 200, 285, but whatever. We need to have our estimate, our recommendations as part of this, as a package that goes up to the county commissioners. In addition, we need to have a recommendation on the one-year renewal. One-year renewal is not just a revenue issue, in my opinion, because if we structure the regulations correctly, then the renewal would not, would be fairly automatic unless you've had complaints. And if you've had complaints or problems, then you don't renew. And that's got to be the hammer, that'll be one of the hammers. You just don't renew if you've got complaints, or if maybe you have two complaints, whatever. But that needs to be part of it, and the one-year renewal lets you, lets the county, lets us renew, review these rentals and get rid of the problems. So I, it's more than just a revenue stream, it's an enforcement stream too. So I also, I don't understand the renewal rates that you've got down here. You've got 40, 50, 60, I don't understand what that means. So maybe you can tell me.
So that's estimating the number of vacation, so if we permitted it one year, what's the percentage of, that are going to get renewed each year? So right now, we're issuing permits that are good for two years. So I have, you have to make some assumptions that your renewal rate isn't going to be really high the first year, because they're going to be good for two years. You can't just, I can't go back and like void all the previous approvals, they're going to be good for two years. You're not going to have a.
When were they granted though?
What's that?
When were they granted?
Every day, like every week?
Just to move, sorry.
So 40% is what's coming up for renewal this year?
40% is the typical renewal rate we get each year.
And that's some rate rate.
So it would take two years in general to wash out all of the two-year permits that you've granted.
And that's why it jumps to 80% by year three, because you combine those two 40% so you'll see like a gradual increase over three years.
You're estimating it's 40%.
Like I mentioned, a lot of these are.
No.
No, if you look at the numbers on the top, those are actuals. I have, we looked at everything since 2018 when we started regulating this, as to the number of new, the additional, which is that $120. And then the renewals, right? So when I took, it's really hard to figure out the renewal by year. So Swati and I did a bunch of math, and what it came down to is about 40%. Because it stagnates in the end of one calendar year, and then there's some jump over fiscal years, so I did this by fiscal year, which kind of modifies all the numbers as well, so.
But that begs the question in my mind, by year three, shouldn't you assume nearly 100% renewal?
Well, you're going to have some that just don't want to renew. They tried for two years.
That many, that seems like a pretty significant percentage.
I mean, that's why we have a 40% renewal right now, right? Because you have 10%, each year that drop off.
How much of that low renewal is a function of the lack of an enforcement mechanism?
Yep. I can tell you from our neighborhood, it's huge.
My question, there is, so those that drop off, do you know in fact that they're not ready?
No, we don't have a way.
There is the first problem.
Ironically, that AM file, I looked it up, and they said that there may be it, and I don't have a permit for it.
So, yeah, how we negotiate this, I have to speak in favor of some kind of system here where we can identify the problem or know the problem, not identify, well, identify it, but know it. We don't know it right now, and why are we doing something?
There's no way to know. We cannot spend staff time to go out and verify.
I know, that's why we're talking about this.
That's the software.
Right, so this is the crux of the thing. And then all the details, I think Alan's bringing up, some of the points that have to be ironed out to make sure before this comes to the commissioners that we've and staff have done their best to get this problem quantified.
Right. There are some costs in this that I don't agree with. The constituent portal that Deckard proposes, that Granicus doesn't have, and Granicus has this constituent like a Esri base, so it automatically goes. We are already mapping our short-term rentals internally, and we don't need that cost. That's a $5,000 cost on Granicus you can mix essentially. The constituent portal by Deckard is just where they post it online, and we have a process to post them, and if the commissioners want us to post short-term rentals, we can. So we can knock that $5,000 off as well.
Explain to me what that is, I'm sure, I'm not sure I didn't understand what the constituent portal does.
Sure, all it is is an extra website that, once we hit issue, it automatically posts it to a website, so that if you as a neighbor want to go look at, what are all my short-term terminals in the area, you can just see.
So this is a portal that the citizens would have access to, that would list all the permits basically?
So we still would have a registration portal and a complaint hotline and online forms that they could fill out. This is just one more $5,000 fee that they tack on, so I don't think we need.
Will the constituent portal that they're proposing have more information than what's on the county site? Because it just showed there is a vacation rental on that property, or does it give all the, any specifics that are with the permit?
So right now, it's only internal, it's not external.
Right.
So we map, like through our GIS software, every month we update it. The commissioners want us to make that external, we can.
With that, what I'm asking is, does that bring up the permit or just the fact that there is a permit?
I think it's just the fact that there's a permit.
Yeah, I thought so.
I can check.
I thought so, because we've had that discussion before about anything, whether it's zone change or subdivision, you know, here's the applicant, here's the whole file, and that's available to the public on a click of that property.
So I'm sorry, would you tell me again, what the constituent portal is supposed to be?
So it's a, sorry, we do map your actual.
So you and I can look at it online?
Okay.
Yeah, it's, think of like our current projects, where you go and see all the current projects. It's what I understand, and they have a, it looks nice, it's a good user interface, but for $5,000 a year, I don't think we need it, so.
If it's something that our GIS can do.
Right, we do, well, that's, so Granicus has that, and where it's, it maps it already. The Deckard software has like a separate portal that they can go into, so it's not a map, it's more a list. So, yeah, it's not comparable, that's the one difference between the two, it's not very comparable.
Well, there's a lot, I mean, he also can. I'm sorry. That Granicus is not going to have or offer a complaint hotline?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, yes, they have one.
But it's free?
No, so I, I actually didn't break it down. It's broken down here what each one of these costs are.
Oh, I had it, I got it.
Sorry.
No problem.
The, Granicus also discounts the address identification based on the total number of services you get with them. So as you knock off some of these, this fee on the top is going to go up. So it's not as easy as saying, okay, we don't want this, so the cost is going to be less. So you get, you know, 10% discount, 15% discount, 20 if you get all these different services. Where Deckard is more of a all-in-card style, where you can say, I don't want this, and there's no other fee changes.
And Deckard's the one that does numerous ones across the nation?
No, Deckard's the smaller company.
Deckard's smaller, Granicus is large.
The other thing to consider is that when I spoke with City of Coeur d'Alene, Deckard, or sorry, Granicus had recently purchased a larger one and combined, so they're a much bigger company now. And once that purchase happened, you no longer have a dedicated account rep that you can call, you only have an email address that goes to a generic inbox that they typically answer within 24 to 48 hours.
Oh.
Where Deckard, so that's on the, that's on like the user side for the county. Where Deckard has an account rep that you can call anytime you have an issue. So Sandpoint found that very beneficial, where anytime they see an issue, they call, you know, Lucy and say, hey, Lucy, these are the problems, and then she goes and fixes them.
Where did you get that information about Granicus? I talked to them today, and they didn't say anything about that.
This is why I don't talk to the salespeople, I go and talk to the users of it. So I'd rather, I mean, salesmen are really good at their jobs, and I've learned over the years that sometimes they're not always honest, right? That used car doesn't work as good as you thought it would, right? So I go and talk to the users of it, so that's why I had that meeting with City of Coeur d'Alene and ask these kind of very specific questions. So if they're promising this, what do you actually see in head to head? So what does the actual service look like versus what the demo looks like? Because sometimes the demo's a little bit off.
So Jake? I see on page five of their proposal, if Deckard has provided three references, two in California and one in South Carolina, have any of those three references been contacted for a letter?
No, I have not called any.
And did Granicus provide any references and have they been contacted?
I haven't looked. I've spent most of my effort just kind of developing the costs outside of it.
They have a lot of people you can contact, Coeur d'Alene is one.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we have to check that out about Granicus. The other thing, you know, we've got down here is a 65% compliance that Granicus guarantees is not necessarily their top line. I mean, it sounds like I'm a salesman for Granicus, but I think they do offer a lot of sophistication that I'm not sure Deckard has. Deckard's only a two-year-old company. It's based in San Diego, California. You know, Granicus is a nationwide company. So, the other company that's into business has been, has getting a, getting a presentation from, I mean, to the Idaho Association of Counties, and that's GOV OS, which may be, you know, maybe a good, good company to look at as well. But I think there are, you know, there's a number of things that, that these companies can offer that we just don't have the ability to do. So, what I'm concerned about is, is the final analysis here, that we, that we have our recommendations for the fee structure and so on, and we've, we've got apples-to-apples comparisons with the different companies. We should use the same compliance numbers, because I don't think there're going to be any, any real difference. At least, I don't know that there's going to be a difference. And we need to use the numbers that Granicus has, that's a real number, as opposed to an estimated derived number by Deckard. Deckard doesn't have that ability to identify as readily the individual properties. They will do it once we make a contract with them, but they won't do it before that. So, the bottom line is, what? So, give me, give me the final analysis here, because I'm not sure that I follow it completely. Where do we come out?
So, I think the final analysis is, if the board were to approve the major change of making a yearly renewal, right, and by my estimation, about an $8 fee increase and getting rid of the additional permit, same law, discount, if you want to call it that, then it would be a break-even program with the assumptions that I have built into this model. To be safe, you'd probably have to do more, like, at least a $25 increase. I also have a number of other changes I think could help with some cost savings that I would propose when looking at the ordinance change.
But if, but if, and I don't remember the numbers that Alan mentioned, but if, if we use the, the total number that Granicus had suggested, we actually have, that would help the business case, right?
So, I-
So, just that change would be-
Yeah.
So, if you modify this number to 850, that modifies all of our revenues to somewhere around between 40 and 60,000 depending on each year and the compliance rate you're getting. That's not the 65% versus. I also haven't done the actual dollar amount estimation as to how much staff time would go, and it really depends on how the ordinance gets changed. So, I just did an assumption that one-third of the cost would go, cover staff time, so.
How many people would that be involved?
Say that again, sorry.
How many people would be involved from the staff?
It depends also on what software. Because if we go with the registration portal, where we have less staff involvement, and we just go in and hit yes and go, and it collects the fee, there's a lot less staff time involved. If we go away from the onsite visit, there's less staff time involved. The reinspection, if you, on the renewal, if you get rid of a reinspection, that changes it as well. So, like I said, there's, there's too many variables to say exactly.
So, considering all these variables, is there a recommendation coming forth with to, I mean, what, what do we need to do here to move this forward?
Nothing. Like I said earlier, we have a workshop scheduled with the board on the 30th of this month. We'll present the same information to them. If you guys want to make a recommendation as to what their fee change would be, and then what software we would recommend, if any, or we can wait to see what GOV OS has and present all three of those to the board on the 30th.
Well, I would prefer to wait and see what GOV has, has to offer. GOV OS, I know that Commissioner Alma has expressed an interest in that. Well, as I see it, what we need to do today, and I assume we can do that based on the agenda item, is get the commission's feeling about a recommendation on the fee structure and the one-year renewal, so we can include that in a spreadsheet. And then we need to look at the, at the numbers. And I think that what the, what the commissioner's going to look at, pretty much, is, is this going to be a net cost to the, to the county, or is it going to be a, a wash, or maybe better? And that's, that's what I think we've been focused on. Obviously, that means you have to make different assumptions, but I think the assumptions are, that we, that are, that we're talking about are valid. Nobody knows exactly, because you won't know until you get into the program. I have a lot of confidence in, in Granicus's numbers, so, for what it's worth.
I think the biggest point I want to hammer home with the board is that there's not a way for staff to do this on their own.
That's right.
It's not like there's building permits where we can go out and say, yep, there's a building, get a permit, right? It's hard to verify the use without some kind of software tool. And there are software tools out there that are going to help us.
Well, the other, the other, I think with regard to staff time, I have another thought. You know, you could go to a hybrid, and that is, you would have staff go out on a kind of sampling basis, you know, and make sure that people are giving us a straight scoop, you know? Depending on, somewhat on what we do with the regulations, but I don't think you need to go out and look at every, I know Coeur d'Alene, of course, Coeur d'Alene's not really regulating anything, but, you know, they just have people sign an affidavit, you know, that they're, they've got adequate parking and that kind of stuff.
Do you currently inspect on a renewal?
Yes.
I mean, that's, that to me would be an opportunity on a renewal, particularly, particularly if they haven't had a complaint, I don't see the reason to inspect.
I have to look. I don't, I don't. You know, I'd just say, let's take one step at a time here, and then we get this program, then we can start refining it. You have to, you know, get the rubber to hit the road before you can actually know where you're going, and we're still in the air here a little bit.
Is the, is the big picture answer going to be, it's going to be a net cost in year one and break even or better in the years following? I mean, I don't see how you get over, you get a pretty big hurdle in, in year one, based on the fact that a large number of your existing permits don't have to renew in year one.
No, but you've got a vast, not vast, you've got a significant number of new ones that are going to be, you know, getting letters and being pressured to. That's actually going to be a larger bump than it was.
So, if we get up to 85% in year one, it could be a potential break even, right? It really depends on like-
Based on what, on 650 or 867?
On 650, which is, I mean, you can-
Can you put 850 in there right now and see what happens?
Yeah.
Put 867, that's the number. Yeah, just, great, do it.
If we get to 860, at even 65% compliance, it's 40,000, 51,000, 75,000, and 62,000, 85.
So, it's, it pays for itself.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
With the, with these fee assumptions.
Right.
Yeah, that's why I said, you know, earlier, you know, if, if, if they're more comfortable, staff is more comfortable with a best-case, worst-case.
Show it.
Do both 650 and 865. But in the presentation, we need to make, make sure that they understand that 867, not 865, 867, is an actual number.
Yeah.
Not a derived number.
I can refine this tool to say, okay, estimating 650, 750, 850, and essentially, rather than comparing, yeah, that's actually that.
Just pick two.
Yeah, yeah.
Best case, worst case. You don't need to do the intermediate stuff.
Okay.
So, until this actually is implemented, you're not going to know specifically, everything's going to be a guesstimate up to that point. Best guesstimate?
Well, yeah, I mean, even the 876 is the absolute verified number.
So, you know, the question is, why are we doing this? Because the commissioners are going to have to say, is there a problem or a concern that we have about rentals in Bonner County? And if the answer is yes, then they should simply take the recommendation and start and, and see how it goes the first year. And then, as it's going, I'm sure there's going to be modifications and a learning curve, so we can't really, I don't think at this point, overanalyze it. We have to make our best decision based upon information available and get this thing going down the road.
So, the other thing to note is that the fees are based on what they consider as the, what, what they can verify.
Yeah.
So, it's typically a dollar per verified listing, right? So, verified address. So, Deckard, at 650, even if they, they identify 1,000 of them, the fee for the first year is going to change. The fee for the second year would. It's the same thing with Granicus, where they estimated 653, not that they base their fees off of. So, I don't want to go back and tell them, no, there's 850, because then the fee's going to go way up, right? Right? So, I don't know-
No, that's not true. Deckard's, Deckard's, Deckard's fee will go up, because it's, it's per property. Granicus is not.
So, that's, the, the model for their fee structure for both companies is based on the number of verified addresses?
I don't think so. I know it is on Deckard. I mean, I'll go back and look at the proposal, but is that in their proposal? I don't see that.
For Granicus or for?
Granicus.
Well, I contacted their account rep, that's what, that's what he told me. So, he said that the, the fees are typically based on what, you know, what other services you apply for or want, and then the total number of identified addresses. That's the front of the cost.
Obviously, you know, we'll have to get these, these companies involved at a later time, you know, when you actually make a proposal to, for a contract, and that, that needs to be there. But my understanding, if that's one of the differences between the two companies, is that Granicus doesn't, doesn't increase the fee because there's more properties, Deckard does.
Not, not in the first year. So, the, the fee will be that fee. So, from what their account rep said, you know, if it's $19,750 for 650, but they identify 1,000, then they eat their costs on the other side of it. So, and then after the first year, after they've gone, done identifying, then that, that rate will change each year.
All right, so, the things we need to do is, number one, we need to, we need to decide as a commission whether we would recommend a different fee structure, the 285 and 150, or 285 and 200, or one-year renewal, so we can plug those into the spreadsheet.
You said, did you say, if I remember correctly, you said Coeur d'Alene is 285?
And I just double-checked as well.
What's Sandpoint, do they have a fee?
Yeah.
So, Sam, I don't know Sandpoint's fee, but the typical, like, industry standard for regulations is that you, your fee is the, the same cost as the average nightly rental rate, which is about 286 in our county. That's what Granicus told me on their estimation of their-
I'm surprised it's that low.
I'm surprised it's that low, too.
Well, it depends more, that's the average.
Right. I mean, I think there's one up on Twitter that's-
Well, but that says there's quite a few that are lower, right? For that to be the average.
There are.
Let me, let me just add one other thing that gives me, gives me pause about Deckard. Dustin, their rep, responded to, I had a conversation with him, and he sent me an email that had a, a screenshot of their program, and it had dots, blue dots everywhere, you've probably seen it. It has a number of rental units in that particular area where the dot is, and he had two dots in all of Priest Lake with five rentals. Not possible. Not, there's five in our neighborhood. There's five within a block from me. So, I don't know what, what they're doing, but that's just isn't right. So, for what it's worth.
Yeah, like, to pick up on what Mike was saying, what's the problem? I think we heard a little bit of an allusion to it tonight in this file that we had, where the neighbor up top said, well, you know, he referenced their doing a B and B. Is that a concern to the neighborhood? Or is, what level of concern is? I know there's concern. What level of concern? I know in my neighborhood, there's grumbling going on, well, they're doing a B and B, like, it's some plague that's hit the neighborhood, but there's only a couple of them out in our area that have ever been a problem. So, what is the concern?
Well, if you go back, I mean, Alan said it earlier, go think back through our, all our discussion. We were debating all these regulations, and we came to a point where we said, what's the point of, of doing this if we have no way to actually enforce the regulations?
Right, that part I understand, but, but the very basic, I mean, the whole country is facing this. There's all these Airbnbs and VRBOs, et cetera, et cetera, short-term. And is it a problem? What is the problem that it creates for the communities, for the neighbors? Sure, we hear the ones like the castle up on Eagan Mountain, you know, with the big parties and everything, but are the vast majority a problem? And if Coeur d'Alene doesn't even inspect them, what do, what do they see in down there in Coeur d'Alene as the emphasis for doing this?
Once again, let me speak from a personal reference. This summer for me has been a huge problem. I think it's been a horrible summer next door. I think a lot of people, when they have a problem with there being something in their neighborhood, they have no idea who to even call.
Yeah.
They just live with it.
Right.
You know, I have the advantage or the disadvantage of kind of knowing the inside track, but I have neighbors who live in the next adjacent neighborhood to where Alan and I live, and they'll say, oh, God, you know, I, but I, there's nothing I can do. And I'm like, oh, yeah, there is. But they would have no idea.
So, just the regulation part of it puts that in place, because here you tell, the owner has to tell the neighbors his contact numbers, here's all this kind of stuff. So, that's going to be there with this enforcement, or that will be readily available. So, maybe it's just, we don't totally understand the problem yet. We will once this goes into place.
I think we will.
Yeah. I think we do, we do in extent. So, if you look at the preamble to the county's current ordinance, it says in there very specifically what the purpose is. The purpose is to protect the neighborhoods.
Well, sure, that's why any-
And that's, that's the reason for it. When I talked to the commissioners a few weeks ago, Mr. Bradshaw and Alma, they both understood that completely, that, that they, this is, this is to implement-
For the protection.
Regulations, enforce regulations that will protect our neighborhoods and protect the character of the neighborhood. And that's, you know, that, that, to me, they, they seem to be completely in agreement. Commissioner Williams was hard to tell where she was, but-
It's just interesting, I've been, I've been trying to, to arrange a VRBO for Thanksgiving for our family.
It's part of the problem.
No, he's trying to rent one.
Get China to rent one.
Another area of the country.
And the vast majority of go on and say, this is not a party house, no parties allowed. How do they enforce that? You know, you rent it.
They don't.
Yeah, see, that's, that's what, this is like, ah!
So, I have two comments. I mean, first, I agree with that. I rented one on Bottle Bay three, four years ago, because I had my whole extended family out. And, and that was when I told the lady, the, the owner, what we were doing and all, by the way, I live, you know, six miles from there, she said, oh, this isn't a party. She almost didn't rent it to me for a while, because she was so concerned it was going to have some crazy party. I said, you know, the average age of this group is, you know, we're beyond the party age. But, but the other, to your point, I think even if, I suspect it's not a, a problem where the majority of these rentals are, have, have an issue. My guess is it's a small minority, but it seems like we have an opportunity, without spending any money, to address the 10 or 15% that are a problem with this tool. And, and yes, it comes with an increase in fees to all of them, but I also think, you know, that the fees are small compared to what I think the revenue opportunity is in general for these rentals. So I don't think that's a big deal. I think the fees are reasonable. And, and it gives us a, it seems to me like it should be a very effective tool to address the 10 or 15% that are repeatedly an issue.
And we're also leveling the playing field because we're no longer on the honor system.
Yeah, now everybody.
There's some advocates, there's some people that are, that are renting their place out.
That's a, that's a good point. That's a good point.
Or from the, from a business standpoint, it makes perfect sense because it's a level, suddenly it's a level playing field.
Right, right. So it's, you know, these fees seem reasonable if, if they're, to me, if, if, if that's what Cortlande does, I think it would be interesting to know what Sandpoint's fees are.
I can look at it.
Just because they're kind of right, right in our neighborhood. And, and, you know, being comparable might be something that somebody might want to look at to see if they're comparable with Sandpoint's fees. But from what, from the information we have in front of us, I think the 285 is fine. The 150 renewal, I mean, that's a pretty big discount. I, I'm, you didn't do this in your spreadsheet, but I see the other options you have. I'm not in favor of charging them more money based on the number of violations they have, for a renewal, that is. I'm in favor of not giving them a renewal.
Yes.
Right?
Yeah.
I, I don't, I don't want another hundred bucks more because they had, they had issues.
Or say five years.
Those numbers are actually what the current fee schedule is.
Okay.
And when I look back, we've never charged anybody more for.
A second.
For a renewal with violations. As in like, we don't have any validated violations.
Yeah, you don't have a way to track this, right? So.
Have you ever rescinded anyone's permit?
Not that I'm aware of.
Yeah.
On what basis would you rescind it?
Violations.
Violations, broken, down.
How many violations annually do you have for your 300 and some?
I don't have that number.
Well, there you go. We need something empirical that gives us a basis to start from.
Just in the interest of relative apples to apples, we take a look at what Blaine County, for example, or Valley County, for example, do since their recreation areas with ski areas with.
I checked into, which one's the county with Ketchum, Sun Valley?
That's Blaine.
Blaine, Blaine doesn't regulate that. He actually asked me to send in my organs.
What about, what about Valley?
The city of McCall does, the county doesn't.
Oh, McCall definitely does.
There's a lot of counties that don't regulate this just because of the vastness of the counties. The majority of the short-term rental ordinances you're going to see are.
All in their cities.
Like Cootenay County doesn't regulate this. If you go to Airbnb outside of the city limits and in Cootenay County, you don't need a permit.
Well, yeah, but how much of Cootenay County is outside of Hayden, Hayden Lake, Post Falls and Cortlande?
Quite a bit.
Big county.
The big county.
Whole east side of the lake.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Big county. Well, let's get this county on the right path.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have, we have, we have the ordinances from McCall and I'm sure, you know, the staff can provide them to anybody who wants to look at them, but we've, we've got those.
Good sampling?
Yep. So we've looked at them, you know, I've spent a fair amount of time on this.
I was just interested in looking at other counties other than city.
Do we have a meeting before you?
We're a city, we're a city issue.
Here's, here's Sandpoint's.
What is it?
New, new, non-owner occupied 210 is the permit, initial permit. Rental, annual, annual renewal 157. Owner occupied 157 and 105.
Okay. Well, their, their ordinance also only allows for so many non-owner occupied.
Yeah, right. They've got a ratio in their neighborhood and.
It sounds like the city of Cortlande is going to do something similar and try to limit based on like block areas.
Yeah.
So I don't know how.
Lottery.
I think they're setting themselves up for litigation, but that's me.
And that wouldn't work in Chuy's or at all.
So do we have, do we have another meeting before the workshop?
We do not.
No, no.
Okay, so what, what information do we need before that workshop?
Well, we need to see whether the commission would agree that we could recommend these increased fees, one-year renewal, so we can plug those into the spreadsheet and then Jake and I can work out the best case, worst case scenario.
The spreadsheet already assumes a one-year renewal, so I didn't build that in as a, as an option that I could.
Right, but we need to be able to say that the commission would recommend it, right? So would we be in favor of recommending that?
A one-year renewal? Or what?
285 for a permit, 150 for renewal, and one-year renewal.
You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, I don't know what problem with the one-year renewal.
It's that emotion, Mr. Chairman.
No, it's not a motion because I don't think we, it's not an actual.
We're still stipulating.
I, I, I would, I would be in favor of that.
Yeah.
I, I think one, one thing I would argue in favor of the one-year renewal is that, that gives you the opportunity at that one-year interval to, to address any violations and what we're going to do about violations rather than let it linger on for two years. So if there is an issue.
I think as a standing point, we should change it from a permit to a license. Because licenses are typically renewable where permits like a conditional use permit is valid for.
Everybody uses permit though.
Yeah.
That's the language.
Sandpoint just said permit.
Oh, does it?
Potato, patato.
Right.
Liquor license.
Liquor licenses are renewed.
Any liquor licenses.
Garage licenses are renewed.
VRPs.
It may affect be a license.
In the essence of this is, is a basis by which you can protect neighborhoods, which is the thrust that Alan was saying earlier. And when I think about it, we have an issue in our own neighborhood. Lots of young kids, five, six years old, and they want to put a verbo in there and that's oil and water.
It's also like what's enforceable too. We should craft all sorts of regulation, but then what's, I have three guys, right? So good to have facts, the brass tacks of what's enforceable.
Soon you'll have 20. We can't afford this.
Soon you'll have 20. Wow. All right, so I guess we're, we're in favor of recommending this increased fee schedule or one-year renewal, so you can plug that into your spreadsheet?
Yep.
And we're going to do the best case, worst case scenario?
Sure.
I would also factor in, I think my recommendation on your, on your staff cost is if you have a renewal and you haven't had violations, I'm not sure what the purpose of another inspection is.
Right.
So I, I would take that out, save that money.
What about the, the discount on an additional permit on the same lot at the same time?
I don't think so.
No.
Keep it simple.
I'm fine with that, getting rid of it. 285 for.
I mean, most likely they're not discounting the rental amount. They might be, but they're probably renting it to two different people and they're not, they're not discounting what they rent it for. So why should you discount what your, the cost of the permit?
I think the idea was is that we have the manpower going out to do inspections, so they do both the inspections at the same time.
And so how often will you, you be reviewing these fees to make sure that the county is in a neutral or a?
We do a fee revenue or a fee review each year. We look at like staff time versus total cost.
So that'll, so whatever we start at, eventually it'll be adjusted to reflect the reality of the, of the.
Potentially.
Implementation of it.
So Jake, assuming that they get a valid permit, assuming that there are no violations, then they go ahead and, and put in a timely application for renewal. They're not going to get a site, site inspection first time around for a renewal. How many years do you envision renewing them without a second site visit?
I would make something.
As long as it's not a problem.
I would make something into the ordinance so long as they're not trying to increase the total occupancy or increase the parking, you know, something where if it has a substantial change more than an X percentage or any change at all, then there's no reinspection required. Something like that is what I would say. That's all comes down to.
So as long as they're not a problem, we leave them alone.
Right.
Unless they change their, their use.
Yeah, so if they, if they go and expand the home and they add three bedrooms and, and you have to review the parking over again and verify that they have enough parking and verify that.
But that's a new permit then, right?
No, I think it could be done in.
How do you treat, so that is a good question then. How do you treat somebody who does that? They, they put an addition on and then they come in and now they want a new permit with a higher occupancy rate?
I'd have to ask.
Do you look at that as a renewal or as a new permit?
We've only had the opposite happen where we, we've had, so there's a sewer district that started charging by total number of people. They use the occupancy rate we assigned to charge them for. So there's folks that are getting like an $800 sewer bill. So we've had a lot of requests like, no, we don't want that many. Can you decrease it to seven or decrease it to nine? So I don't know if you have, I'd have to check with the planning techs that I have that are, that are processing these, to see if we've ever had one that is increasing.
So I guess that comes out of how we write the regulations, but my recommendation would be is a modification, particularly if it's an increase, then that requires a new, I, I would suggest that should involve a new site visit and that's probably should go back to the, to the first time fee. The other thought I had is I was sitting here thinking about your additional permit on the same lot at the same time. It seems to me the only real savings you have is your travel cost. I mean, you still have to walk through the other building or whatever it is and do another inspection and write a second report, et cetera, et cetera, whatever that, so the only savings is you sent the guy out there once instead of twice. I don't know, and I don't know how you even figure that out on average, what's that, what that's going to be.
So like when someone wants to memorialize or a reinspection of a building, right? So if someone comes out, we have to get a reinspection, charge them $100. So I'm guessing they discounted that by 20 bucks and said, not $80, let's go with that. So that's my assumption of how that got baked into the fee structure, so whose idea it was, I'm not sure.
Yeah. But I'm okay if they're the same, like 285 for both is fine, or even, even if it's a second permit at the same time.
I tend to agree with Dave.
All right, so I guess we agree that these, one-year renewal, at least informally, and we can use those in a spreadsheet for our presentation at the workshop. Hopefully we'll get some of these details ironed out with these two companies. Who would like to attend that workshop?
Uh, the 30th?
I'll be out of town, so.
Is it three still or?
Two.
Is that two?
Two, two is the potential time.
I'll be there.
But I'll be out of town.
It's at 2:30. It's at 3:30 right now is what it's scheduled for.
As you know, I'm typically there, so.
Dave, can you be there?
I can be if you would like me to be there. I don't.
I would like you to be there.
Okay.
All right, I think we beat this enough. Anything else, Jake, on this?
Nope.
That's all I have.
Hey, I got an idea. Let's talk about natural resources.
Would you, would you make a note to check and see if you can move that meeting?
I'll send it in the mail.
All righty, okay, natural resources. Swatty, what do you have?
How about cookie time? Did you get my last comment? Cookie time. They were like a week ago.
My sugar's running.
Well, it was on the shared drive. I don't see it in here if we're on, whoops.
Version 10?
No, version 10 is, does what I.
Okay, which one are we on then? Sorry.
We'll open up version 10 today.
Version 10? I bet she said one more.
So what are we working with, Swatty?
Which version do you have up there, Swatty?
Version 10.
10? Yeah, I don't see my comments that I made.
Some of them might have been deleted because.
I'm sure.
They were updated. This, this document has been updated to reflect the changes that were made at the last workshop.
Is there any way we can block that, son? No?
Unfortunately, no, I would have done it a long time ago.
We could, we could increase the verbo fee by 10 bucks a month and get some money to pipe lines.
Get some shades.
Get some blinds. Chair?
All right, so let's, let's go through this as quickly as we can.
Which chapter do you want to start with?
Chapter one. All right, so these, uh, Swatty, these have, these have, these are the changes that, that we made through the last meeting. Is that right?
Yeah, these are the, this, this document reflects the changes that were made in the last meeting. I'm still working on updating the, the data in this document that, that is, there are some references to 1998, 1998 data or, yeah, data from several years ago. So I'm, I'm working on updating that to 2020s or the latest data that I can find. It's taking a while because it's hard to, because the, because the information on DEQ or EPS website is not as upfront, so it needs a little bit of digging.
Okay. So we need to add, we need to, we need to eliminate these red marks, red writing, because that, it's already been.
Highlights?
Yeah.
Well, some of, some of it will remain in this component before we send it to the agencies so they can review those questions and get back.
So this is a note to IDWR?
Yeah. Yeah, some of them are notes to IDWR so they can comment on it.
Verify or. Superceding data or.
It's basically.
We still, we still need wetlands, right?
Yes.
Have we had any response from fishing game?
Yeah.
No.
I think they have, in general, they have provided a list of wetlands that they would like to see included in the ordinances for preservation.
Don't they, don't we have their list from when the comments I made on special areas?
Yeah, we have that.
Can we just incorporate that here?
We have, again, in, the, the way we have been updating this section is, is that we are not writing or we are not including data that is, that is very particular, say, like for, for, in, for example, in wildlife, we are not listing all the species, right? Similarly, in wetlands, we would not be listing all the wetlands that we have. We would be referring to a source of data that is the National Wetland Inventory and say, everything that's included in there is what we would be using to build our ordinances on. We are not, we are not listing each wetland by itself. That's just going backwards from what we have.
So any, any wetland in, in the county that is not mapped is not going to be encompassed in any land mining use regulation.
Right, because.
Comp plan.
Right, because we don't have a way of delineating wetlands if we don't know there exists one. Unless we start asking landowners to, to irrespective of whether it shows on the NWI maps or not, unless we start asking landowners to get a wetland delineation irrespective of.
So from the standpoint of septic and sewer development and groundwater protection, we're leaving ourselves without recourse, it sounds to me.
How so? How so?
If it's not a mapped wetland, we're not going to deal with, you know, P, you know.
How do we know there's a wetland there?
How do we know that it isn't? You know, I mean, we don't know, we don't know, Swatty.
You need a map.
Again, the.
You need some indication, so the only thing that's out there is NWI. You start there. And we know from history that the NWI maps are pretty broad brush. If you or don't include everything, they don't do anything. They're, they're good, but they're not perfect. So if there's an indication on the property in question that NWI says there's wetlands here, then that springs forward the condition. Now go up to the land.
I guess my concern and what I'm trying to spitball a solution to is the problem that happened recently out on, on Bronx Road where, you know, wells were drilled, septic tanks were put in, suddenly people are starting to have E. coli in their, in their drinking water.
But that has nothing to do with wetlands.
Why did that? How did that make?
Apparently it was not a mapped wetland, but it was pretty darn wet.
But people are not drawing water for drinking from wetlands. It has nothing to do with drinking water.
Yeah. And the, the core has the description of wetlands. We have the three components there and we verified it there. So that's probably why if somebody says it are very wet, they don't qualify for wetland. Anyway, maybe this is a good time for me to jump in. After the last time we talked about this whole topic of the natural resources, my, my simple brain went to, why don't we just, like this discussion, for all the different resources, just say, here they are, a general discussion about the resource, what it is, why it's important, and. They're not, like Swatty just said, not listing out every wetland, not listing out every wildlife species.
That would be ridiculous.
And then just say, why it's important, the uses as the state code requires, as much as we can identify the use of that wetland or that not wetland, the use of that resource. And then some discussion in that item about the protection of that resource. At the top of the natural resources, you're going to say, natural resources are a important resource to protect in the county. So it simplifies it in that sense, hopefully. Now, I, I hoped to do this in the last two weeks, just take a crack at that, and I just didn't have time. So I don't know whether I'm spinning the wind or, or it's something that we can really grab hold of and try to do this.
I think that's what we've kind of tried to do.
Well, it is. It's along the lines of what we're trying to do, but, but, and we've had these discussions about all these, you know...
I think that generally follows what I wrote for...
Right.
Surface water.
Yes, and that's, you know, that's what's funny, is that we go into a different area of a, of a resource and we start talking about great reless.
No, I think, I agree. That should be the gist of it. It's, you know, a, 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 a general description of what the resource is, what do we use it for?
Yeah, and so...
What do we need, what do we need to do to protect it for those uses?
Specifically here on, under Section 1.5 Wetlands, you know, I think it's the last sentence there that talks about the map prepared in 1987. I thought we had agreed that we weren't going to be using dated maps, that we were just going to give references to current online...
Well, and I don't even know that, that, when you call up the NWI map, I, I'm never associated with a date with it. Just look at what's there.
Well, my point is, whatever reference we want to have, it should be an online or a current reference and not even put a date in there.
No, you put a date, just say...
Just say, go, go to this, this source to define your wetland within Bonner County.
You know, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yeah.
You know, that first paragraph I have, I have a little comment there on the side. It says, "US Army Corps of Engineers detail wetland maps that provide more exact and precise location descriptions." And my little comment, I don't, I do not believe that's factual whatsoever. I have emails from US Army Corps, and you just kind of look at that comment there, and that's a quote from emails. I can bring those emails. This is from Megan Biljen, Biljen, Biljen? I can't remember how you pronounce her last name. And she's the one who wrote that. You know, like she said, she's heard language views that the required resources featured in that NWI map are federally recognized wetlands. That's not factual from terms of jurisdiction or 404. This is, this is directly from US Army Corps. They admit that those are just kind of a best guess.
It's an indicator.
It's an indicator, and, and that's what the county's currently doing is, if they have a piece of market come in that they want to go location, and they're, they're going to make them go get it delineated. And so I think that's probably the way we want to continue with it. I can't help but think.
And all the, all the wetlands that Idaho Fish and Game listed in their comment, they, Merritt Horstman, he, he said that those wetlands are actually included in the National Wetland Inventory, so there is nothing new in those wetlands that is not already there in the NWI maps.
So why are we using two, uh, sources, I guess, of wetlands? The Corps, which is questionable from what you're saying, Matt.
Well, it's not questionable as whether it's...
In the NWI.
NWI are the, are the, are the maps that were prepared by US Fish and Wildlife Service. Army Corps of Engineers uses those maps as an indication of wetlands on the property.
So the two aren't similar?
No, they are using the maps produced by US Fish and Wildlife as, as an indication of...
Well, I'm just saying, let's just reference, if we can, one source.
Yeah, it will be US Fish and Wildlife National Wetland Inventory maps, yeah.
Yeah, and take the Corps out of it.
No, Army Corps of Engineers is the enforcing authority.
Is enforcing...
They're the lead agency for enforcing wetlands.
Well, okay, so that's their issue. We're just saying you need to, well, we get down to our...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a second, wait a second, guys. I think what Matt's doing, what Matt's suggesting is we take out more exact and precise those words, and then we take out 1987.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and we add a sentence that says, uh, "Wetlands that are indicated on that map would require delineation before any land use approvals." Can you say that?
Yeah.
Then we eliminate the rest of the paragraph, the rest of the chapter.
And, and what we're really trying to do with the delineation is to confirm the presence or absence of wetlands. We don't want to say that.
Right.
Yeah. Right?
Yeah.
Because it may not be there.
So the NWI maps indicate a potential wetland. Delineation will perfect the indication to extend and type.
All right, so then if we do that, and we add that to that paragraph, then we can eliminate location, emergent wetlands.
Yeah, no need to...
Freeze Lake, Kokalaka, Kokalala.
Yeah, there's no need to, we don't need to go through all those specific locations.
All right, so then, then we're done with wetlands?
Well, after Swati's able to digest what we just...
No, I, I, I know. I, I have that in the comments.
You got it? Okay.
Okay, so you're going to fix that, and then we're going to move on? We're not going to be hung up by wetlands anymore?
What about the state requirement for uses? It says analyze the uses.
Well, we're going to say that if there's a land use proposal, then it needs to be delineated.
Well, that's a delineation, but the use of the wetland...
What do we use them for now? Their aquatic habitat.
Scientific explanation of uses of wetlands, they're not, they're not, it's not the land user, who's, landowner who's quote using it. It's broader than that.
So what do you want to say? Wetlands are, wetlands are a filter for the lake and all that stuff.
Exactly. And US Fish and Wildlife descriptions, and talk about wetlands, something out of their literature that could be plugged in here very easily to say what the uses of the wetland. If we're going to follow that pattern with all the individual...
I think we should, because that's...
Are there, and are there recreational uses of wetlands?
Sure. There is?
Oh, yeah. No, it's, you look at US Fish and Wildlife, they've got a very nice description of what wetlands are, the value and so forth, yeah.
So Don?
So the Idaho Fishing Game priority... I think a really good assignment for you would be to plug in the uses.
So waterfowl hunting, boating?
All side by sides.
Yeah, it's quite extensive.
So lifted from Fish and Wildlife Service?
Okay, so Don's going to provide a paragraph.
Jet boats.
Yeah, right.
Airboats.
Then we're going to do that relatively soon. All right, so then we got fisheries, we've done that, beaches, we've done that.
So, so am I, am I understanding that correctly, that we are going to remove location?
Yes.
Emergent wetlands?
Yes.
Freeze Lake, Kokalala Lake, stuff?
It's just the first paragraph.
Yeah.
But the first paragraph needs to be written, pre-written as a...
Yes, I'll, I'll read it.
And then Don is, then Don's going to give you another paragraph on this.
On the use, the value of uses, so.
Sounds good.
Okay, geothermal waters, we've done that, fisheries, we've done that, beaches.
I read, I read somewhere, somebody thinks they found a geothermal spring in Bonner County.
Oh, no, no, no.
It's way over in the mountains on the east side of the lake, but...
All right. So watersheds and aquifers. I think we've done what we can.
Plenty of those.
Well, what are we doing here? So we're actually, what are we doing?
So are we eliminating the new port aquifer section where it's highlighted, or what are we doing with that?
No, we'll just list the watersheds here.
So I think, we had this discussion last time, I think I'm up in the surface water resources section. In fact, I pulled the list that was here and moved it up there.
Yeah.
So I don't think we need it twice.
No, that, that list is in the appendix.
No, we don't need watersheds twice.
Yeah, and you move, that's right, you move, so you may even just, if, if we need a reference here, just reference, it's in the appendix, the list is in the appendix.
Yeah, so on Section 1.9, it should be just aquifers, right?
I, I would argue for that, unless there's some technical reason why we need to address both, but I address watersheds and surface water resources.
Right, so let's just make this Section 1.9 aquifers.
Aquifers.
And then we're going to have, we're going to leave this and let the IDWR comment on it? Is that right, Swati? All right. Oris, did we do that? I think we did that. No, we didn't do that.
Dave was going to come up with some sort of an outline for, at whom to work from, hoping with the draft.
I think what we're going to do is we were going to try to update these, these numbers, and I guess we have, right? Are these updated?
In the tables, is that what you're looking at, table six?
Yeah.
And I think, you know, the discussion was, well, total acres, 1.1 million acres. I think that was the entire county. Yeah, that's getting close.
Yeah, because percentages are about the same. That's about right.
The numbers don't jive. They don't seem to be.
Timber processing plants, had that, was that been updated?
Sorry, where?
Table 8.
Table 8.
Where is table 8?
What section is table 8 in?
I think, I think what I...
I'm right, I'm looking right at it, okay.
What I suggested last time, and maybe we can, or maybe we can't get the data, but to me, it would be more interesting to talk about how much timber is harvested. I mean, if we want to talk about plants, timber processing plants, that's fine, but to me, that actually sounds like it belongs more in the economic development section than here. But in terms of the, the forests as a natural resource, how many board feet of timber do we harvest in a year? And I thought it would be interesting to know how much of that is coming from public lands, how much is coming from private lands, and if we can break the private lands down to the large timber company-owned acreage versus little guys who have 20 or 40 acres and harvest their trees.
And how much variation is there in our timber cut from year to year versus, say, a five-year period?
It would be good to look at it, over the last five years. Here's the annual harvest. Or, you know, that, that to me would be good data to have, and it, and it's going to, it's going to support the, the notion that it's a significant portion of our economy. It's a big part of our economy, right?
All right, so how do we get that data?
Department of Land, would be a great holder. I'm willing to say that, that Idaho Forest Products...
I was going to say that, too, yeah.
They keep tabs on that, not Idaho Forest or Idaho Forest Products. So, because they're an association that groups them all together, and they talk with all of them all the time, and they keep those numbers. And they, to break down...
Their local office?
Private, of the, of the...
Would they know?
Private held and small private.
Do they know?
My condessorate.
Bonner County specifically?
Okay, okay.
I, I would think so.
Somebody want to contact them?
Yeah. I'll do that.
So we're good with table 6, I guess? We're going to leave it that way?
I, I think it's, it's, I don't think much has changed there.
All right, so, and then productivity, we're going to, we're going to revise that once we get the numbers that Don has. We don't need to talk about Idaho's in general. I think we just need to be specific on Bonner County.
As specific as we can be.
Well, I think we're going to get information, Don is going to get some.
Yeah, because, for example, Idaho Forest Products, you know, maybe they're trucking stuff from Bonner County up to their Moye plant, you know, as one...
But they, but we, we were, we're just interested in the harvest.
Harvest.
So, timber processing, we're going to eliminate that table. We're just going to eliminate that table.
Harvest.
We have table 8 that has a value.
All right, soils, sensitive species, we, we did that. So soils, what do we do on that? I think that was going to be Matt.
We're just contacting soil and water.
Yeah, and I did reach out to NRCS. I can't remember, and she responded, said, "Well, I already gave all this information to Don," and so I said, "I'm going to call Don now." And I said, you know, "We appreciate this," but she sent me back our 400 page, and I'm just like, "Well, wait a minute here." And she just dumped it. And, and, and so I, I just asked, I think it was two questions I had, and the problem is, what we currently have, Dr. and Company, in this chapter, I think, land use for soils. You know, it gives a list of soils, what's prime and what's non-prime, except now somehow several of those that are non-prime, and they're still classified as a class four soil, which has very severe limitations. Somehow now they became all areas of prime farmland. My question is, how and when did this occur? And so I don't know what, I don't know what to think or do on that. In, in that 400 map page, there are those maps that we looked at before that have about three different color codes, not colorblind, I can't figure them out, and they're still pixelated. If you try to zoom in, there's no way to tell whose property is, different shades of red or orange, you know. So I don't know what to do with that.
Can we just do this? Can we, can we just say, list the types of soils that are in Bonner County in general, and which ones are of concern from a land use standpoint, and which ones aren't?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But I guess that may still beg the question that, that Matt's raising.
It's a valid question.
Right, right, which, because, I don't know, which ones are of concern? I'm not sure I can think of another reason, another, another way to think about that other than understanding which ones are really good for ag, because...
Which ones are good for, you know, for test, I guess?
Yeah, because that's a big, big item that came out of the old report and the present report, too, that not all the soils here are adequate. However, the, the drain systems, the, the drain fields that are being designed today, take that into account, they're all above the bad soil.
So like, you know, the presentation we got today on, on the, on the comp plan amendment, the staff always has in their, a section in their staff report about soils. So that seems to me to be a matter of concern to the, to the plant department. So we need to say something about that in here. I don't know, we have to say a whole lot.
Well, I think because of the way it's written in the present crop plan, that's why they're doing it, of course, because that's what they're calling it. But the question is, again, even though the Conservation Service says these are not conducive to good drain fields, go to Panhandle and you can engineer a system, just about anywhere.
If you're willing to pay the...
Yeah, it's just that's the last result, the lousy land that's out to the belt, what it comes down to. I mean, even that won't be here tonight. They're going to have to, Brian has already done it, he's gone in there and searched, "Here's a pocket, here's a pocket, here's a pocket," to put in a standard drain field, but I'm telling you, they could put in a drain field on top of that rock.
Okay, so maybe that's a bad example, but it seems to me we need to somehow list the soils that are present in Bonner County. And then what, you know, what, I don't know, maybe, maybe just, maybe just that, maybe just list them.
Aren't there state code implications and requirements, too, because, well, Idaho, not necessarily in Bonner County, but, you know, further south, there's a hell of a lot of agriculture that goes on, and our codes are written with that in mind, right? So...
Well, if you look under...
We're a little bit of an outlier compared to a lot of other of the 44 counties.
So if we do, on 3.2... I'm just trying to move this along, so...
Didn't we already address soils quite extensively in agriculture?
No, we didn't. We, we deferred it.
Pretty top level. We talked about, like, total acreages of, of, that's categorized as prime ag soils.
Wasn't that what we got in the discussion about state designated issue?
Yes, yes.
Right, we did.
And we took that out.
Oh, we did?
I believe we did. I think...
Oh, shoot, I was hoping maybe we could take this out.
We also deferred to the natural resources.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, we did? We said, oh, we kicked soils down our...
You can well down the road, yeah.
All right, here we are.
I'm just looking at these. Is, would it be enough to have these classes identified with their general characteristics? And, and then maybe in an appendix, have a list of all the soils in which class they fall into? And, and if there are classes where we have concerns, and, and I think it's maybe a good idea, now that we've had the whole discussion about septic drain fields, maybe to at least identify that there are some soil types where it's going to be more challenging, but Panhandle Health does that. They'll assess the specifics of the site, and they'll, they'll determine what's an appropriate septic system for those particular conditions. And then, at least in the past, we've based some of our land use criteria on whether or not there were primag soils. And I don't know if we're going to continue, if we're going to continue to do that, we need to identify them. If we're not, we don't, maybe don't need to. But there's continuing questions about the reality of what's a primag soil and what isn't.
How similar can this determination be to the wetland discussion with the NWI? NRCS has the, the map around there now, so that's going to be the indicator of the soils. Do we take that at face value, or do we say, here's an indication? Prove otherwise, but even then?
How do you do that with a soil type?
We don't... Can we imagine that there's going to be a regulation that says if you're primag, you cannot subdivide it down to five acres or, or less to get houses? No. No. So what, what's the use of, of identifying the soils?
I don't know.
I, I, I think we're getting...
We're trying to...
I think we're getting, we're trying to micromanage a macro issue here. And I don't think we should have... Into the micronomics of all this detail in this land use.
There's all committed, it says you've gotta preserve the farmland. How and why?
Is there value in having some sort of uniformity with the other 43 or however many?
No.
Just throwing that out there.
Uniformity with regard to the comp plan?
Consistent.
Boundary counties' comp plan is six pages long.
Yeah.
So I'd be happy to...
Way more usable farmland.
All right, let's do this. How about this? We'll just say, under prime farmland, we'll just list the prime farmland categories. How about that? You've got them listed here, but what their characteristics are.
Yes, and stay on the weeds.
And then we do the same with the non-prime farmland. We eliminate the...
Do you want to refer to the agency mapping and soil section similarly to what we did with wetlands?
Sure, but it's not gonna be the definitive answer, it's just an indicator.
I'm not sure that the National Wetlands Inventory is necessarily a definitive answer. It's the best, it's the best one we seem to have available.
In a broad sense, it's the best thing available. You don't get into the micro stuff until you have a development in.
Yeah.
Someone says...
Yeah, it's an indicator. But here, the difference is, is nothing with the descriptions of the various soil types, even if you go down through and get some sites. This is primag, so what? So what?
Well, I think the so what...
Is it gonna say, "No, therefore this area has to be 40 acres?"
All the primag farmland down on the Rutherford Prairie didn't say that from becoming one big subdivision in the last 30 years.
I don't think, I don't think it's, I don't think it should be used.
Yeah, there isn't.
It's water that made it work.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so if you look at 3, if you look at 3.3 soil properties, there's engineering index properties. Is this all current?
Right. The soil report was so extensive, and that's why. How do you use this?
So isn't that, isn't that already there in the soil properties?
It is, it is.
So we'll just leave it.
Yeah, again, so you're using NRCS's information as the display of what's there, the soil types have, but it's gonna keep in the back of the... So what? Are we gonna regulate a land use based on soils?
Okay, so where are we, Mr. Chair?
Hey, we're gonna leave 3.3 as it is.
3.3 as is.
And then we're just gonna list the different soil types and under the categories above that, 3.2 and 3.1.
Right, so everything staying...
No, no, just, we're gonna take all the verbiage out and just list the prime farmland.
Oh, okay.
Are we packing up?
Thought I was squatting.
It's okay with me. All right, so now we're, we're at wildlife, and we've, we did that, we did that, beat that to death. Minerals, okay, we have math, new language, which I think is just hunky-dory. And then we're done. Oh, God.
So are we ready to workshop this son of a gun or what?
Well, yeah, I think so.
We're doing it by the whole thing now, workshop, or by sections?
Let's do the whole thing.
Don't, don't...
Don't open it up anymore than we now do.
Well, no, but we have been doing it section by section. We have. So we can get it to a point where it's similar all the way through. We've not done wildlife.
Yes, we did.
We did wildlife when you were gone, Mike. We did wildlife meeting that you were gone. We did, we hopscotched around and did a bunch.
That's why you got it.
When you weren't there, yeah. We picked, we cherry picked and got what we could.
I mean, the whole thing compared to wildlife.
As we could.
Chapter 4 to, what was it? Here, you will see it's, it's a...
Hopefully now all the sections are gonna be similar in nature, the way they're described, how they flow. And that's, that's the gist of the whole component. And CC is gone.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, so let's set this, wait a minute. So Don, you've got a couple of things to do.
Yep.
And then Swati, you got a few things, yeah?
Yeah, I need time to update all the resources that we have used in this document throughout.
Okay, so you wanna workshop it when? Well, your, our next meeting is not till September, right?
Yeah, next meeting's the, yeah.
Did I give you enough time?
Is it a five-week month?
It's three. Yeah, because we, the first Thursday was the first of the month. So we have three weeks.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I can, I can get something done by, in three weeks, but...
Okay, so if you can't, we'll just push it off to the next, to the meeting after that, okay?
Yeah, the meeting after the next.
We're anticipating getting some significant comments from agencies on this. Should we do that first?
Well, I mean, usually we don't do that until it goes out for hearing.
But I'll have the document ready by then.
So Swati?
Yeah.
So how do we, how are we gonna get the agency comments for the workshop? Because usually we don't send that out to the agencies until...
That's okay, that doesn't, it doesn't matter if, if we don't send it out to agencies generally, I will send it out for this component.
Yeah, I think, in this case, I expect, I hope, we're gonna get some pretty robust comments from them.
Right, yeah.
And I'm wondering if we should do that first before we do a workshop. That was the genesis of my question. Because I think the whole, the whole thing could change quite substantially in some areas, depending on what they do.
They say it this way, and they say it that way. That's the purpose of the workshop, though.
Yeah, that's true.
We don't need to do this twice. We don't need to, I mean, let's give it out publicly, comment during the workshop. And then when they, when we have our workshop, we'll have their comments.
We could send a notice to the agencies, say, "Hey, we're gonna hold a workshop on this," rather than like an agency routing, like we do for land use files. We could just send a notice saying, "Hey, please review and give us feedback before..."
Yes, give to specific agencies.
I think you're setting yourself up for having to do another workshop. Because I think if we get substantial comments from the agencies, then I think you need to have another workshop for public comment.
Assuming we're gonna listen.
Well, we can do that. I mean, we've done that, we've had several public workshops.
I know, I understand. I'm just wondering if it's more efficient to get the agency comments incorporated first, then do a workshop with public comments, deal with them however we're gonna deal with them, and then, and then we'd be ready to go to a hearing.
I think, I think that makes a lot of sense. The problem is that we haven't had a very good response from these agencies.
I understand that's...
Would slating, and that's my, my thought, is would slating a workshop for September 19th, for example, help, help us leverage comment from, from the agencies? And if we end up with buckets, we push it to the first meeting in October or the second meeting in October.
Well, you can't predict what they're gonna do, right? They may respond to that leverage or they may not.
So what if they don't give you any comments?
Well, then...
We're good, right?
We're good, yeah.
Okay, let's agree to that. Because once we ask for comments or solicit for comments for the September 19th workshop, and we don't receive them then, we're, we're moving forward.
Yeah.
You know, because what they're gonna do, when they come back, have been through this, when it comes to the commissioners, no matter what we've done, it'll come down to that point, and then they'll, then they'll, they'll come out in force.
Well, they're gonna do what they're gonna do.
Because this is, remember, this is a workshop, this is a recommendation to the county commissioners. When the county commissioners come to the point of making a final decision, that's when we'll have everyone coming out of the woodwork.
But generally speaking, the commissioners have basically adopted everything we've set up.
Why, that's what commissioners do.
Well, it's also the subjects that we've had before them to date. This one's gonna be, I expect this one to be a little different, natural resources.
I think you're right.
Certainly land use component will be where the rubber meets the roof.
Well, it'll be interesting, because didn't we solicit a lot of their comment when we first started this chapter?
We've been soliciting comments from agencies.
And they haven't been responding.
None of them have.
No, I'm saying to Swati, "Contact them again." And it's like, at what point do you just say, "We've tried with you"?
And...
Well, we're gonna route it.
Well, of course, we have to do that, but I, I don't know. It'll be interesting, Dave, because it might not be as robust as you think. Couple of them didn't even show up to talk to us.
Or public something.
Yeah, okay. Well, now, now we've actually given them something to comment on that we, that we've revised, so let's send it out. So why are we, why are we looking at the 19th? Did I miss something?
I threw that out as, as, you know...
That's good.
To give, to give Swati some time to work, to give agencies, I was just spitballing. So there's nothing magical about that date.
First of September to get all, everything put in place, I guess. And then that gives enough notice...
Hey, Jenna, could you put up a calendar?
To the 19th, that's what I was gonna say.
Right?
Because Jenna said the first meeting's on the 5th, so the second meeting would be on the 19th.
We'll know at 5th if Swati's been able to be successful in getting all the backup information.
Well, we can push it to another time.
That's correct.
Okay. So what are we looking at?
Where?
There we are. What's the second meeting?
The 19th.
19th. All right, so why don't we, why don't we shoot for the 19th for that workshop, and then we'll try to get agency comments. And maybe you can get your data straightened out, too. What's the next date after that, Jenna?
So it really depends if staff, Swati can have the updates adequate at our September 5th meeting. And if we find that to be adequate, then we would be moving forward to a workshop on the 19th and asking for, once again, comments.
Right.
October 3rd is, is too close to make the hearing, so it'd have to be the second meeting on October.
Just a workshop.
Well, if we had, if we had a workshop, then, yeah.
Yeah.
Workshop on the...
It's only 14 days later than the next one.
All right.
If the workshop goes well, they wanna go to hearing, it won't be the next meeting, but it'll be the meeting after.
It'll be the one after, it'll be the 20th.
But 19, 9/5th or 5th of September is when we are having a workshop, just like this, not open to public comments, because, because by then I won't have everything, because by then is when I'm aiming to have everything ready, all the sources in place. The 19th of September is when we are planning to have a workshop with public comments and agency comments, right?
Right, yeah, public workshop.
Okay, so the hearing, if we, if everything goes well in the September 19th workshop, then we'll have a, a hearing set for natural resources a month after, approximately a month after.
Over 17.
Over 17, yes.
Do we have to set up our agency routing between the workshop and the public hearing, or public comment workshop?
Yes, we have 11 days to September...
If we did a workshop with no public comment on September 5th and then a public comment workshop on September...
19th.
19th, do we have to send out agency comments in between there?
No, agents, we'll send the agency routing right after September 19th.
Okay.
Yeah.
What we're gonna do is a selective distribution to the agencies that we want to comment on the...
For, yeah, for the workshop, we will reach out to the same agencies that actively commented on the files. And even those that did not comment, I will reach out to them and send them the draft. But for the actual hearing, I will send it out to all agencies.
Yes, you have to.
Yeah.
All right, so then, okay, so, and Swati, the only other, well, we have two other components, public services, facilities and utilities, and land use. Where do we stand on public services?
I've been trying to update, and you sound like you're out of the gap of information, I put on that, that version in that plan. But we're still, these people just do not wanna respond. I, I don't know how many times they've been emailed.
Yeah, Jake has been trying to reach out to agencies, so has Daniel. He's been trying to reach out to fire districts. As of now, we haven't heard back much, right?
We're, we're getting some more responses, and we'll, we'll keep going on it.
What are we asking them?
We're asking them for any general plans, that's what the state code calls, so...
So you're asking them to send you something that they should already have?
In some cases, yes. So take like Solid Waste, for example, I just heard back from them last week. So they didn't quite understand it, so I sat down with Melissa downstairs and said, "Tell me what plans you guys have for expansions of any sites." Something that would like, "Hey, we're, we're reacting to growth, and what other future plans you have." So then she put together a list with the engineer and gave us, gave us that as an update. That's kind of a general plan as to what Solid Waste is doing, and that we could use in land use, right? Okay. So the same thing with like the water sewer utility districts, those ones do have, because they have state requirements to submit, like their plans. So more often than not, they do have them, or they should have them. So some of them have them on their website, so we can just pull them from their website. Some of them, they don't have a very robust website, so we have to ask them to send it to us. The same thing with fire districts, I think I gave Daniel the fire districts to reach out to, what general plans you have. And if there's just no response, or like, "No, we don't have anything," we just put that as the response.
And here, a couple of years ago, three years ago, some of us met with, with some of the fire districts. And across the board, they all just said, "No, we don't have any plans, we respond." I said, "Well, what do you, what do you think about the growth? Is it, is it hurting you? Are you having to ramp up, having to buy more equipment?" "Well, yes, but, but we don't have a plan for it, we just react to it."
We don't have any metrics or response time.
Annual budget, they said, "Hey, we need a new truck because we bore the last one out because of so many responses." And it was mostly empty. So they don't have a CFP that says, "Okay, by 2027, we're gonna have 17 trucks and all."
So now we have, Northside Fire, Spirit Lake Fire, both have capital improvement plans, and they have, they're collecting impact fees. So they have a more rigid standard on like what their plan is, at least for their capital improvement. So we lean on those. I know Segal Fire is interested in that, and they just met with the same company the county did to do the impact fee analysis.
How about asking Galena Consulting, who they've talked with?
That's a good idea, I could do that.
Because they're, they're actively marketing their, their stuff, which is good.
They acquired their, their biggest competitor in Idaho, so they're like the, the main company.
So yes, all of them would hopefully say, "Well, yeah, we've had contacts from this and this and this."
And it's more than just the fire district.
There's some new fire district, I know there's one new.
The new one in Preslate, yeah.
Yeah, East Preslate Fire District, I knew they're operating out of one of the guys' shops. They don't have a building yet, I met with them a few weeks ago.
So maybe we can get, we just, I think we can get this information, at least from the fire departments and so on, but maybe not from the sewage water outlets.
We'll, we'll keep reaching out to them.
If they're, if they're required to have them?
Of a certain size they are. I mean, there's so many little districts around that, that serve five lots, because they got a common drain field. They, they're not required to do that kind of stuff.
But are we interested in documenting those at that scale? I think we're the bigger ones, right?
More the district, the tax industry. It's more just, and again, to what end? Certain cases, there are subdivisions, mostly subdivisions, that have formed a district because they're gonna have a common drain field or something. It's an option. It's a one way to develop land. But we're not gonna, I mean, it's already regulated in that sense. I don't, I don't know the benefit of doing that. The other one, as far as public service, thinking about what Jem County did. Jem County, their impact fees cover five or six entities, fire districts, schools, parks, and the sheriff.
Schools?
It doesn't, no, excuse me, didn't include schools, because that's not allowed yet. But they included the sheriff, county sheriff, his impact fees.
Go back, Don, to sewage, I mean, that's obviously an important consideration when we look at some of these.
Well, true, but again, it's, it's all, it's figured out and regulated through Panhandle Health.
Oh, yeah, no doubt about that. We don't regulate this, but we do, we do wanna know what they're, what they're gonna do with their...
Well, I think what we, what we really need to know, and this is what we see when we get the applications, is if they're in it, in a, near a district, do they have an agreement from the district to serve them? And, and that changes all, maybe not all the time, but that changes from time to time, because the districts expand their, their capabilities. And so documenting what they can do today is, I'm not sure how meaningful that is. It's probably gonna be out of date in two or three years.
Can you pull up 6508?
And as population grows and density increases...
There's gonna be new, there's probably gonna be new.
You know, some of these are gonna consolidate, they're gonna, yeah, there are gonna be mergers, there's gonna be...
And there's places where the owner thinks they're in the district, they're within a physical boundary, but then the district says, "No, we can't serve."
Right, right.
Sure.
I think the reason that we have this information on the sewage districts is because it's required by 6508.
Right, it's required to say what the, right, what, what... Right, it's required to say what the, right, what, what's the, how does it read? Uh, down further. Who's scrolling, who's scrolling, who's got the scroll? There it is. Analysis showing general plans-
General plans.
For sewage, drainage, power plants, blah, blah, blah. But, you know, alright, that says sewage.
This makes a lot more sense in an urban area where everybody's-
Sewage is the conveyance of total sewer. That's what the definition of sewage is. We don't have any of that in the county.
You don't have any sewage in the county?
No. It's effluent fields. Effluent is taken from tanks to a field. That's not sewage, strictly speaking. Now whether that is what they meant, again, this code-
Out of California.
Well, I'm just suggesting, it makes more sense in an urban area-
Very urban.
Where it's urban sewer-
Sure.
And, and asking that urban district to define what their expansion plans or coverage plans makes a lot more sense than our sort of, most, most people are on individual septics, and we have a hodgepodge of smaller private systems here and there. It, it's very different here than that. And like I said, it's, it's, the information that's relevant is when you get a development application, we may want to know if, if they're in the right location, do they have a commitment to get served by their local sewer district? But that's something we have to find out at the time.
So, what can we do that would still comply with our requirement here?
You know, Alan, I was just saying the same thing, because we're general plans for sewage. We can go ahead and list the known sewer districts. One of the comments that P S D made regarding this, who emailed, was that, because one of the comments was plans for future expansion, or future hookups, availability for additional hookups. And panel on health district made the comment, they don't think we should have that column in there, and I, I didn't understand why, because that gives us a good idea of, well, okay, if Southside Water and Sewer is gonna go ahead and triple their capacity or double their capacity, that's good for us to know. So I don't know where that comment came from, so when it says general plans for sewage, I don't know if we can be appropriate or, so that's when the, the business of kind of, you know, downscaling a lot of these things. You just go ahead and list the names of the known sewer districts, known taxing sewer districts.
Yeah, then maybe-
Make a comment.
And then on, on those that do not, that don't fall within sewer districts, then the subject is regulated by Panhandle Health, and there has to be permits obtained for Panhandle Health.
Right.
So that's our plan.
Right.
So it's like, you know, that whole list there, the general plans for drainage, there aren't any. General plans for power plant sites, there aren't any. Again, this is, this is really first level development of an area, utility quarters, water supply, there aren't any. County doesn't provide, it's all private provision, whether it's septic or sewer. Fire stations, yes, firefighting equipment, make it a general. What, what's it got to do with land use? Health and welfare facilities. Well theoretically, fire, fire could have some relevance to land use.
And in that section, I got ahead and I tracked down a bunch of those, and I made comments on the sites, and a lot of those, I've been, I've been, went to like several websites for private schools, and got the most recent author websites, the number of current students, what grades they have, and I have all that in there, but I don't necessarily know if we need to have that.
No, I don't think so. I think, I think, I think we, we just start listing, I think that's right, I think we just start listing the sewer districts that we know about, or that are, that exist in the county, we should have them all. And then, and just have another, another general statement about subject tanks, and the Panhandle Health.
Yeah, it's part of discussion.
Then, then-
Kind of a dismissive discussion of-
That's really, that's really the plan for this county.
That's the plan, so-
Right.
And we can't, that way we're not, we're not gonna get hung up anymore about these, these outfits that aren't responding, so. Alright, so we're gonna do that, can we do that?
I, I can work on that a lot easier.
Yeah, I just make sure that you get all, I mean, most of the sewer districts, I think, are probably in the Priest Lake area, so. I think there's five, maybe, six?
Yeah.
Different something?
Essentially neighborhoods.
Hey, actually, that should already be listed in the Priest Lake subcom plan, because we, we did that research. I think it's listed in there.
Looking at like sewage-
Well, just go on.
We, we have a map of all the taxing-
I think DEQ, DEQ has the most extensive list of, of these systems, it's incredible, you get on that thing and it's pages long. In Bonner County, it's crazy.
Alright, so drainage, do we have to even say, I mean, Bonner County has a stormwater ordinance, so, will we have to say any more than that? Nope, I don't know why. We'll just leave what's here, is that, is that accurate? Is that what the ordinance generally says?
Are you are back in natural resources?
No, I'm back on drainage, I'm, I'm in public services.
Public services. Code is a public service-
We're gonna get through this.
Oh, I gotta get, were we done with natural resources?
Yeah.
Oh, we were.
Play a while with it.
Half hour ago. Oh. I didn't know, we didn't talk about minerals, but I think I-
Oh, yeah.
We just said it's okay.
Okay.
We agreed with everything you did. Alright, so under drainage, there's a stormwater ordinance, I assume that this is, this is accurate? Planning department?
The stormwater ordinance in our, in our Bonner County device code?
It says under drainage, chapter two, it says Bonner County stormwater ordinance.
Could you put up the component, the draft or whatever?
Oh, okay, I see.
In the early nineteen nineties, Bonner County embarked on a study of stormwater management, erosion, blah, blah, blah. This is what my friend is getting hung up on.
More history, so, and even that-
I think we just need to describe what the stormwater ordinance is, if we have one.
Yeah.
I assume we do. So I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting here is that we just, we just set forth that there is a Bonner County stormwater ordinance, that's B R C something, B C R C, whatever. I don't even know if we have to quote it, but we, we'll have to quote it, do we?
No, it would be a good idea to not do that.
Okay.
Yeah, because it's gonna change.
Alright, so then we just eliminate that, so now we go to two point two, storm sewers. We don't care about city of standpoint. And we don't care about city of, of Priest River, it's nothing to do with Bonner County.
Can you go down to the section, I don't think it's, no, it's not live, that's a little- I mean, granted, this was again, Jacoby swiped at the world and natalisted everybody, no demand.
Uh huh.
Including all the vast majority was stuff in the cities.
So I, I suggest we eliminate section two point two, storm sewers, because I don't think we have them in the county.
I don't think anyone disagreed with you.
No. Power plant sites.
So strike two two.
The power plant sites, do we need this?
No.
You know, they're still there, I went to their websites, and they no longer, I don't know what it's, why do they-
These dams are here, I can tell you that.
It's just, it's just information, it's not, it's not about a land use.
Yeah, what's it gonna do with land use?
Well, it doesn't hurt, I guess it doesn't hurt to leave them in here. There are people who would say, don't allow building near or under the power lines.
Well, then I want Caribou back in.
Alright, so we'll, we'll just leave this section, four point two, Pacific gas and electric transmission, do we need that?
Are we, are we removing two point two?
Whoa. How did that happen? I got feedback.
Sorry.
There's someone out in the hallway.
Swati, do that again with your voice.
Okay.
Where, where I lost you.
Two point two's out. Yeah, I, that was, and at chapter three, to what end is it there?
Well, does it hurt? You can just leave it in here.
I'm just saying, the plants are there, they're owned by Avista, they're owned by EPA, whatever, who are EPA, and there's, they don't have any plans for expansion that would affect land use in Bonner County.
Well, I just, I just think we leave it, leave it at there.
You want filler?
I don't think we need to say anymore.
It's, it's only a half page, or three quarters of a page.
Same with the transmission lines, I mean, that's nothing really. Four point three, you know, I don't think we want to be advertising for one particular company, Horizon, I'm sure there's other providers, I would take four point three out.
Well, it's no longer, I think they're talking about landline service.
Oh.
So it, I don't know, countywide, is it zipli everywhere? No longer Horizon.
No, no, ours is like something weird, zipli or something.
Yeah, zipli, I think it's zipli.
Zipli bought out every, you know, just-
Yeah. Horizon sold all their rural service.
So why do we need this?
We, we have landline service throughout the county.
I don't know.
Actually, probably not everywhere.
Most people-
I doubt anybody's expanding landlines at this point.
No. Yeah, some people are.
Alright, so, so you want to say four point three is zipli?
Where they're requested to serve. It's all private.
Mm-hmm. I mean, you know, either that's- Is it true that, that zipli provides local telephone service to all of Bonner County? Is that true?
Yeah. I think so, this thing, I mean, what are we doing, advertising here? I mean, zipli and tanks seem to be the two broadband providers of choice.
This is broadband, this is land-
This is phones, this is-
This is broadband, it's not broadband yet, phone, I don't know, landlines. Landlines that provided throughout the county.
Alright, so we just substitute zipli for Horizon.
Well, don't even say zipli.
Just, just-
Just keep it general. Private, you know, private, private landline services are provided throughout Bonner County.
Okay, we'll say that.
So four point two, four point one, four point two, and four point-
Well, four point two's about gas.
Yeah, do, those remain as it is?
Well-
Yeah, just leave them. Is it true?
It's true, but again, so what?
Well, yeah, it's talking about California markets and all this kind of stuff, that's not Bonner County.
Pacific gas and transmission isn't even the correct name for the entity anymore.
But it's gonna get, it's gonna get shut off at the California border here pretty soon.
Why, why don't we just strike chapter four, see if anyone makes pub, public comment when we're, when they're-
Well, it is, I mean, it enters the United States at Eastport, it runs down to the pumping station at Samuel's, and crosses the Ponderay, the Ponderay River just downstream from the Long Bridge.
What are you talking about?
Well, that's- Pacific gas, well, what is now, what, it's no longer Pacific gas transmission, but there is, that, that transmission line is still extended, it's still pumping gas from Alberta down to California, and it does transsect the county.
Yep, but so what? Well, that's only on eight, four point two.
It is, I, you know, you know Lupa better than I do at this point, Don, I'm still learning, I'm just asking if it's a consideration.
It was, it was-
Or not because there's a facility here.
It's said to be included in this component, but again, our filter is to what extent on land use regulation.
So let's eliminate four point two.
I don't, I don't think it's, nobody's gonna miss it.
Alright, so inland power, there's no transmission in Bonner County, really? Okay.
Can I make one final point regarding four point two, just before we call it dead? There was a meeting between Northern Lights and the current owner of what was formerly P G T. Last spring, the current owner of this, of this annuals facility and that gas line is looking at new development within this county. And I, the specifics escape me, I'm just wondering if we want to explore that, I can go, I can contact N L I and double check before we completely call this dead.
Actually, Northern Lights is four point five.
I understand that, I'm saying there was a discussion that I was present for between N L I and the current owner of what was formerly known as P G T.
Trans Canada.
I'm not even, that, that's not the name, the, I, I don't, I don't remember the name.
It's the one with the gas lines now, but anyway.
In any case-
You say new development, are they talking about residential service? More increasing residential service or?
It's a weekend, we got a-
They're looking, I, I forget exactly how it all works, that's why I want to go back and double check, because this meeting that I was at was four, five, six months ago. But I would just like, as a cautionary note, to go back and double check before we consider this.
Because right now, Avista sells gas.
No, no, but this, this section four point two, it deals with gas.
Right, and there was talk of some sort of retail-
Right.
Something, and I don't remember the specifics all enough to speak to it in this moment. I just want to go back and, and, and explore this real quick, and come back, come back, look with a report if there seems to be something substantive that we need to be concerned with, that's all I'm saying.
Does it deal with gas, or does it deal with electricity?
Well, N L I has, has toyed with being a purveyor of gas.
Do we have to do-
Avista does it as a utility, so why not have N L I do it?
So five, four point five is also Northern Lights.
You know, I, I just don't think we should be, you know, under chapter four, I think, strike and utility companies, I just, I don't even know why we're naming utility companies, I mean, they're all changing. Just, just say, we have gas lines, we're generic. The gist of this whole component is to show the plans for these utilities.
But you don't need to mention Avista, you don't need to mention zipli or-
Like we just said with the telephone service, there's, there's landline service provided by private companies throughout Bonner County. Yeah, I- There's, there's, there's electric lines provided by, by, they're not, well, they're not private companies.
They, just say there's electric lines in Bonner County, they run all over the place.
Quite a few. It doesn't matter.
I mean-
Nobody's gonna get regulated because they're on Avista rather than Northern Lights.
No, that's why we don't need to be mentioning utility companies here.
Convenient.
Mr. Chairman? I think our director.
Yeah. As far as the, the gas line goes, we do get a public record request about once a year for specific areas of that gas line, because they're interested in what new developments and permits are being permitted within a certain distance of the gas line. So they are interested in new development each year, it has to do with some regulatory, like national regulatory agency of how they get regulated. So, if something ever to happen, if some, you know, contamination or whatever, the gas lines start spreading, they want to know the impact that could happen.
Who operates it currently?
I don't know, I have to go back.
See, there you go.
I know I've worked with G I S to, to fulfill that records request two or three times now.
So, I will go ahead and commit to double checking with N L I and for the minutes of that particular meeting, and if it seems to be something substantive that we need to be concerned with, I will bring that back to y'all.
Good.
Next meeting.
I think, yeah, probably Mike has a point, why, I don't know, I mean, these, these service companies change, so.
They get bought and sold all the time.
So I don't know, they may feel-
Yeah, they used to be Washington Water Power. Remember that?
Something more than, more than-
And they acquired Mountain States, which became P P and L, which became part of Avista. And so, yeah, it's been going on.
Just take out any references to you, the companies.
The specific company names.
Yeah, we don't, we don't care. Probably the only one that should be allowed is B P A, because that's a federal agency, and we pay them for fish and all sorts of things, that you don't know about.
Okay, I don't think there's any reason to have the radio stations in there.
No.
Just eliminate four point eight. I don't know, does anybody feel strongly that we, we should, we should, I, I think it's a little odd to have these, to say, you know, we have electric, electricity in Bonner County, I think that's a little odd.
And have for ninety plus years, yeah, ninety to hundred years.
Not everywhere.
Well, we still have cable. A general discussion.
Yes.
You talk with, you talk with Avista, Northern Lights, they do not have plans for expansion. They respond to requests for new service. But they just went through here, what, ten years ago, their major update, where they updated all the lines, the gauge of their wires, because of growth. But they don't have, you talk with, I've talked with Northern Lights about it, they don't have, you know, you pull out a lot of joy, here's our plan for expansion. Is this your section?
I don't know, but wait a minute.
Well, so, would you show seven, Mr. Chair? Show up for the ice cream social on, on Thursday, and talk to Clinton McKinnon about this, but- I'm getting in the libraries all of a sudden, where are we?
Well, there's, you know, four point seven, I'm unsure how relevant that is, I mean, there are a lot of people have, uh-
Still in chapter four.
Yeah, I don't think we need to-
We need that cable television thing. I mean, a lot of people.
Yeah, and, and most of the world's not even using cable anymore.
Right.
Moving to, streaming or?
Especially not up here.
Wi-Fi.
Any number of, it's all Wi-Fi.
So, let's eliminate, let's eliminate 4.7.
It should talk about cell towers.
Well, you can talk about cell towers.
That is a land use. Cell towers are land use and it's of great concern to a lot of people.
Yep. You mean the existence of them or the lack of them?
Well, both. One group says the lack, the other one says too many.
Or more of the location.
Yeah.
If they're right behind your house.
Yeah.
Well, if they're behind your house, you're getting paid for it.
The fact that we've got the United States as terrestrial and everybody else is on satellite cellular.
Nice little paycheck every month. Yeah, you can build it here.
Alright, so, um, we're going to eliminate the cable.
I think we can eliminate cable.
And radio stations.
Radio stations, water supplies.
And the water supplies, and still listing like J U V did here. We can just say there are a number of, you know, organized waters, public water suppliers throughout the county where we can make some comment that they're regulated by DEQ.
I mean, even that, what says about the 2 now, could just say. Rather than saying the following list, there are some 150-plus private water systems regulated by Panhandle Health and the county serving. Say over.
Over 54.
Over, whatever. Because I don't think they've added to one.
Don't list them all, yeah. Don't cross them.
Oh, for sure you don't want a table.
Serving, serving some number. Yeah, serving a substantial number of people.
In excess of 25,000 people.
Eight for 20 years now.
Alright, then we'll eliminate the table.
Yeah.
Are you with this, Swati?
We, I did get an update, updated table from DEQ.
Oh.
Disassured wells and private.
Like you said, that's the water is very extensive.
DEQ has the list and I have an update. If you want to, if you want to adopt it by appendix, we can do that.
Yeah, why don't we put that on the appendix? But even then, it's.
It'll be on a date or we just?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's okay. We can make. Given the form of some of those go out of existence. Okay, fire districts and firefighting equipment. We're going to update.
So, we want to replace a lot of these tables with generalized text.
We did. And even that, just revising the, deleting text, leaving the table.
These tables have nothing to do with land use.
Right, that's why whatever update we have, we're going to make an appendix.
You care how many ladders they have?
Oh, I thought you were talking about the water.
No.
No, they're fine. There is, there's some, like, fire districts tend to be more dense where you look at like how we zone. Right, so they do lead to land use. Same thing with the water.
Well, okay, so we have 10 fire districts in Bonner County.
Right.
No, at least.
It does have a lot of unincorporated land that is not covered by fire district, so that should be less intense use, right? That's where you have your 40-acre minimum instead of a 5-acre minimum.
Yeah, did we ask that question tonight?
Yes. It's a west side fire district or whatever.
It's an ACI, it's covered by fire district.
Didn't want to be remiss.
Alright, so we need to update this and get the correct number of fire districts.
Yeah, I can get that, just make, I'll get that information because of how many taxing districts we have. Now, it goes on the organization.
Just throwing the, throwing the statement that not all of unincorporated Bonner, Bonner County is covered by fire district. This is general information. I think that's a good.
I think that's a good generalized statement.
Yeah, this has a map of where the locations are.
Yeah, they're, they're taxing districts.
We can add a static map to show what area is not covered by the taxing district or fire.
Is EMS in here somewhere?
Uh huh. It's included. Is it included in fire stations and firefighting equipment, EMS? I don't think it's a separate topic.
So, which one are you on, Don?
Well, EMS.
Oh, EMS.
We're not, we're not there yet.
Well, the reason why I bring it up is I have concern here that in a land far away, we had districts, fire districts, EMS, that didn't cover areas and someone got hurt on a county road that wasn't covered by the area, so what do you do?
Yeah, it's, it's a.
Our EMS is separate.
You're probably talking, where you come from is a fire base.
No, this wasn't actually an EMS case where they said, well, we're not going up there because that's not in our district.
Well, that's, that's, let's talk about that when we get to it. It's, it's Chapter 7 there.
Sign like.
Alright, so, uh, we're going to list the fire districts. And we're not, we're going to take out Table 6.1A. And 6.1B. I mean, I just, you can't, there's, there's no reason to have those in there.
Or you go, appendix or no?
No, I mean, it's not, it's not going to be current information. It's going to change all the time.
I agree.
That was supposed to come with the.
Same with the, same with the apparatus on these different, uh, fire districts. I, I just eliminate that section because we don't know, it's, it's not. It's never going to, it's never going to be current.
Do we have a map of these descriptions?
Yes, and the same would go under the public lines, fire protection for the ranger districts, for example.
So, why wouldn't we just show the map and he, electronically and not go through all this verbiage of description?
Well, it's not that much verbiage.
Well.
It's just a description of the district. You take, take out the population served, the type of apparatus, and projected expansions. I'd take, take those out.
Yeah, so that's basically everything. Just list the districts and show where they're located.
Actually, district boundaries might change too, so I, I don't know. We have to make sure that's current.
Yeah, because many, many times, you can go ahead and subscribe. If you're outside the fire district, you petition. You petition and, and they'll, they'll do a.
Sure.
For a fee. I'll do a couple of, I will do 200 a year.
So, you're saying, don't show a map?
No, do show a map, but maybe have a little caveat in there that you have many.
Their subscription services are available.
Yeah, for a fee. Always. Kind of goes.
Alright, so have we covered that? We're going to get a map or we're going to?
Yeah, we're going to eliminate all the verbiage and just get a map, I guess.
No, I think you just list them and just say covers a certain area.
What verbiage do you want to leave in?
Just the description, district boundaries, if that's accurate.
Okay, leave the descriptions in, but nothing else.
Okay, Priest Lake Ranger District, uh, take out the population served and apparatus and projected expansions.
Just the generalized boundaries of each district.
Yes.
For the forest service and for the department lands.
Right.
There you go.
Same with the Sandpoint, IDL, same.
Right.
I think they've got all this equipment. It's all this fire right now. Okay, health and welfare facilities, this is where these things come in. There's Bonner General.
Yeah.
Is there any other, is that the only hospital in the whole county?
Yes.
Okay. Panhandle Health District, uh.
Panhandle Health sent in a comment. I can't remember what their comment was. I had forwarded.
The description of BGH is going to be.
Try to track everything.
Is there a Panhandle Health District?
I think it's fine the way it is.
Why?
Is there a Panhandle Health District?
Yeah.
It's for, for sewage, I mean.
No. Well, they're the ones who permit septic systems and, and water systems, right?
This is, this is environmental family and community health services.
Yeah, see, well, they have an environmental side, which is the septic stuff and all that. Then there's family and community health services.
Okay.
It's a separate part.
Alright, so this is accurate.
Nursing homes and assisted living and what have you.
I think we take out all the nursing home stuff because that's going to be, it's going to change.
Yeah, they're all, most of them.
Half the majority are in.
Who cares? They're all.
Exactly.
Ambulance.
I don't know of any.
I don't know how you deal with it. I know that the ambulance services in Priest Lake are all volunteer. I don't know what these are.
I believe. Are these still active ambulance services?
Well, and is comment?
Any of them still on the stand?
Under the ambulance, I, I put a big comment in there. I got it from the Bonner County EMS website. Explains that Bonner County EMS contracts with several other agencies and county provide EMS response and transport. Current contract partnering agencies are Clark Fork, Bellamy Ambulance, Schweitzer, Priest Lake, and county EMS systems.
Terrific, okay, so we'll put, we'll substitute that in for all this other stuff.
Does Swati have it?
Yeah. But yeah, I don't see it.
Oh, it says show more. Alright, so we're going to, we're going to put Matt's, put Matt's thing in here.
Language.
Breiter ambulance service. Or EMS, let's just say, I'll say ambulance service, let's say EMS service.
Yeah.
Bonner County Assistance. What's that?
Indigenous Services, County Assistance.
Is it going to be on land use?
Yeah. If you could explain that to me.
Was that not? There were some state changes on county assistance there. I don't know if it defunded it. I'd have to go back.
Why don't we eliminate 7.2?
I'm all for it because I don't know.
I have no idea what, what any of this county assistance language has to do with land use.
Yeah, let's, let's take that out. Libraries.
I don't know why libraries are here.
Because it's in 6508.
Is it? Okay.
But the library services, the only service that is in the county is the book movie. No, that's not true. Well, the library at Priest Lake.
Well, just because it's in the city of Sandpoint, doesn't mean you can, you're, you're just saying, doesn't count? What, what land use regulation is going to relate to the East Bonner County Library on division in Sandpoint?
Not. It's a city, city situation, same with Clark Fork, same with Priest River.
Only Priest Lake. Priest Lake is the only in the system.
Yeah.
But it's there. And again, I don't even, what possible land use regulation? You know, I can tell somebody.
Well, you have to ask, you have to ask the legislature when they put libraries.
Yeah, 508.
There's nobody left in legislature who did this one. This is 1972.
I'd be, I'd be happy if we just listed the libraries of the county.
Just, just list them.
There's only one.
Location.
Well, there's two. There's, there's two districts. East Bonner County, West Bonner County Library Districts. They all fall under those.
But do you know which one serves the East Bonner County District?
Probably the East Bonner County Library District.
The one in Clark Fork, the library in Clark Fork, which is a very little thing.
Well, this is Sandpoint.
And Sandpoint. Oh, East Bonner County.
East Bonner County.
That's East Bonner County.
That's East Bonner County.
So, that's all we need in there. The rest of this, I mean, just say, listen to two locations and what's east and west.
Well, there's two districts though. If you're, you're leaving out West Bonner with, with its library and Priest River.
Oh, Priest Lake.
Well, there's one in Priest River, the main is one in Priest River.
What a Priest Lake branch or whatever.
We just don't need all this dialogue in here.
No. No, we need to take out history, size.
1998 was fast.
Correct.
Who cares? And general statistics.
Yes, general statistics.
31,000 per key?
Let's just put.
Books per capita.
Let's just put.
East Bonner County incorporates a library in Sandpoint and a branch in Clark Fork.
31,000?
West Bonner County Library District includes a library in Priest River and a branch in Priest Lake.
We're just going to list them.
No, we're just going to list them.
Well, that's why I just did.
Yeah, just, just a simple list.
Take out history, size, services, general statistics.
Actually, I was not sure. Is that Priest River Library, is it on High Street? I didn't think so. I think it's on Main Street.
It's on Main Street.
Yeah, it's on Main Street. It's a new building.
Clark Fork, yeah, it's on Main Street. I was just there last week.
Are we having separate sections for each one of these or are we just going to put them under this general?
I think Priest River.
Pardon me?
Let's just check the location of the Priest River one because I, I don't think this is right.
Priest River Library?
Yes. And then West Bonner County, we've got that. Take out just all the other stuff.
Yeah, I'm just going to read all this one thing.
Solid waste disposal sites. Are these all accurate? Jake, you got, you talked to the?
No.
I, I got Henry's email from those and I had forwarded. And so, I think we have the information.
I mean, Garfield Bay, this is unattended. It's attended now.
So, we'll just update it.
We'll update it.
Who cares?
I have a, I have a couple of emails from.
Yeah, so let's, let's update it, but let's, let's, let's take out the schedule. Let's take out the design capacity.
All you need is the location.
I think we just, absolutely, just.
The location of each.
Because we change it too often.
So, you get that, we're just going to put the sites in and their location and nothing else?
Oh, it's there.
Capacity, volume.
Culver and landfill or are they trucking everything?
Expansions?
All trucked.
Are there, are there dome plants for expansion?
Yeah, so I got that list last week.
That's what that, that's what that is.
Yeah, if there, if there, that's probably appropriate.
Yeah. I think like some additional improvements in Culver and I think, there was a couple of the sites that are having some minor modifications.
They're not proposing expansion. They're proposing further development of the site.
Improvement within the existing sites, yes.
I mean, they did have expansion 15 years ago when they bought the property next door.
Right.
So.
Just put in China.
It's right there. That record one is no longer. They, they eliminated that one.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so somebody, who's going to, who's going to take the responsibility to update this section on? On solid waste?
Well, it's time. Just, just wondering.
Matt, that was now. Especially the, the current list from.
Yeah, Matt and, and, yeah, solid waste, I think we got it. We don't have.
Okay, so somebody's got to take a responsibility.
Matt and Jake.
Greenout disposals.
Matt and Ray.
Is that a new site?
Yeah, the green out there.
I'm not sure.
Used to be a bar.
What's the difference between a transfer station and a disposal site?
Really?
Because Dick and Sheet, Dick and Sheet is a transfer station.
They're all transfer stations. They're picking, they're collecting and hauling it somewhere else.
Yeah, that's what they do from the transfer station. It's where they haul it.
Right, so why, so we've got, but there's a separate section, it's transfer station, so they're all transfer stations, basically.
No, no.
They're not?
Well, because you're saying it goes from Dick and Sheet.
So, Culver, Culver is a transfer station because it leaves the state from there.
Right.
The other ones are collection sites. If they take it from one place, take it to Culver, they cook, yeah.
Alright, we're not, but this section does not, does not make those distinctions, so let's change the verbiage. So, county disposal sites, we should, maybe, I guess, maybe that is, is that the collection site?
Yeah.
Alright.
Get rid of your trash.
Okay, so recycling centers, do we need this?
Darn it.
Says there's one.
Yeah. Where's it say?
I think we're just, just the first.
Recycling at each one of the.
Just the first sentence.
All they were doing was collecting recyclables and shipping them away.
But we don't need all.
And they don't even do that much anymore, I don't think.
Cardboard.
We don't need all the detail in here.
No. Alright, so we'll just leave the sense there, right there in 9.3?
9.3, yeah.
And then everything else is gone. Well. It's not correct because I think every one of the dumpster sites has a dumpster or a bin for aluminum, a bin for newspaper and print. And most of them are going to have a cardboard. Dick and Sheet has cardboard. I don't think they have the other. Dick and Sheet has cardboard, I don't think they have the other.
So what do you, where are you going?
They don't have aluminum?
No, they do, Alan.
They do? It's household waste.
Well, then, household waste, once upon a...
They have a magazine, they have aluminum, they have tires.
Mark, they touch it.
They have tires. Have cardboard.
The recycling is going on at, I think, most of, to an extent, like, Garfield, Garfield Bay does not have tire recycling.
We have aluminum and paper.
Aluminum, paper, and cardboard?
All right, so we wanna leave this?
This is really important. That one dumpster, it's gonna have an L placard, that's gonna take cardboard.
I think you've lost control, haven't you?
We're having fun.
We are?
Yeah. Probably have a lot of new information.
All right, recycling centers, do we want it or not?
No.
What's it?
To what extent, to what end?
How's it gonna affect land use?
It's not.
Very good.
All right, so let's take it out. Schools, I think this is accurate.
Swati's gone, so I don't know.
Why?
Can we just reference the school facilities and transportation component, and say, "Go there"? It's already been discussed.
Yeah.
I don't know why they doubled up.
All this does is tell them that there's two, two districts. Well, yeah, let's do that, okay, let's just reference, reference the school component.
Yeah.
And then we don't need, we don't need the private school.
The private schools component is wildly outdated at this point, anyway.
It's irrelevant.
So let's take it out. 10.2 is gone.
Oh, I like it when we get late.
Okay, here's EMS.
Get rid of that.
Yeah.
Well...
It's not EMS, really. Maybe it should be, but it isn't.
Oh, this is emergency management, yeah.
Oh.
Is this accurate?
Oh, my goodness.
Somebody check with Bob Howard.
Well, it's, it's, it's probably out of date, at a minimum.
It's so good.
But again, yeah, what's, how's it gonna affect land use?
Very hard exercises to schedule, provide familiarity with mercy.
I don't think we need it.
It's not one of the listed things in the, in 6508, I don't think.
All right, so...
I think it should be mentioned, but we don't need all this verbiage in here.
Well, you could have a sentence.
Yeah.
The county has an emergency services department, and, and maintains an emergency operations plan.
First sentence.
Period.
Yeah.
Okay, done. Okay, then civic centers, this, this is in May, in 6508.
And I'd say scrap it, because there aren't any.
Okay, so 12...
There's Segal Community Hall, and this and that, and whatever, but...
Yeah, I take 12, let's just take, just take 12 out.
It's not required, right?
It's not required.
Strike 12.
Because you're not gonna have, if you're next to a community center, you can't have more than a 12-square-foot porch.
Let's talk about the fairgrounds more.
Civic centers is a part of the...
Please.
Civic centers is a part of Lupa, but...
It says May.
It says May.
May, yeah.
So we're not, we're not saying...
We're not exercising the option.
So, fairgrounds, is there a reason?
Oh, boy.
We'll take that 12 out.
We think that there ought to be a... I think we should have a discussion. I think this one's fine for 12.3.
I think we need...
We don't wanna add RV park or nothing to it.
12.3?
Yeah.
We wanna leave it?
I think so, it'd be fine.
Why?
Why? I, I would take 12 out, the whole chapter.
Okay. You can mystery.
I haven't seen anything in 12 that's...
And 13?
13, I guess I'd leave, because we're talking about county facilities, maybe, I don't know.
Talking with buildings, okay.
How's it gonna affect land use?
But it's, but it is a, the title of the component is public facilities, so this is a public facility.
Most, and most of these facilities are city facilities, and the county ones are located in the cities. And I certainly don't think, I certainly don't think we need, you know, a page and a half description on the Bonner County Courthouse.
Well, we just leave, no, we just leave the location.
And why?
Why? Because it's a public facility.
Well, okay. In the area of jurisdiction of the county.
It's not within a county jurisdiction, they're all city jurisdictions.
Right.
Everything in chapter 13 is a city jurisdiction.
This building is still leased.
It's still, it's a county, it's the county facility, so just leave the courthouse.
This used to be the federal building.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It's 13.11.
Yeah, this probably, this building should be, should be a, something in here about the Bonner County Administration Building.
Yep, and I could've swore I changed that and made that correction on the side. Trying to see where it's at, though. Because it, it's actually owned by TAC.
Priest Service is all east of county.
Yeah, this is not the courthouse, correct?
And not even to the jurisdiction.
No, the courthouse is where the courts are, which is down by...
First Avenue.
Yeah, it's south first.
The power, down by the power house.
First and Lake.
It's across from the, from the Sandpoint Community Hall.
So this is all gonna be changed, or just change 13-1 to Bonner County Administrative.
Well, I think, I think you put the, I think you list the courthouse and you list the administration building.
You have to separate, you have to separate the court services from the rest of...
Bonner County Administrative buildings?
That's why you said Bonner County Courthouse, and then you, 13.11, whatever.
And then you also need, you need juvenile detention, and you need the jail, then a lawyer.
Which is...
Why do we need any of it?
The address, sir.
You know, I've been saying that, but if we're gonna have...
1500 West Highway 2.
And we're gonna have one county installation.
I don't think we need any of it, because I don't think any of it will, will, will affect land use decisions.
Okay, yeah, I'm convinced, let's take out 13. Chapter 14.
Or, to be consistent with the county, the state code, we could just say, public facilities in the unincorporated area of Bonner County is only school buildings, fire stations. You know, they're already covered in other, other sections, but there are no...
So we don't need 13.
Are there any sewer district offices, or any other itty-bitty little whatevers in the...
This is public facilities, sewer district offices. So, I mean, it just makes some statement that all public facilities in the unincorporated area are already covered in other chapters of this.
Whatever, refer it to wherever.
That would be fine.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Just dismiss it that way. Chapter 14, social and human services, do we need that?
No.
Okay, so chapter 14 is out.
Sorry, just a second, can I just make a note of public buildings in Bonner County?
Just something to say, all the public buildings in unincorporated Bonner County are addressed in other chapters of this component. Why don't you at least say the address for the Bonner County Administrative Building and the Bonner County Courthouse?
Is this a guide to Bonner County?
This isn't Berlin. I mean, it's still in Germany. It, it says, it actually has its own public buildings in our care, it has another chapter, but it has a location in the administration. Okay, well, I'm happy.
But, okay.
And you don't need all this other stuff about the district assessor and all this.
All right, so if everybody does, I mean, if those people who are assigned anything in this component...
Should I leave this?
I think, I think we're, we're gonna be done with this, with this component.
Then, then we don't need this, and we don't need any of that, so it's just one...
If you need the sewer district's complaint, then we'll say, well, you never responded.
Well, are we gonna be ready, can we workshop it at the, at the first, only first week of September meeting?
Believe me, we'll workshop it.
I think we can.
Yeah. It'll be, so, yeah. Us and the staff will be here for that one.
Yeah, so we can do that, all right, so land use, anybody look at that?
Oh, constantly.
So, I have a suggestion on land use. So, the way the land use component is structured, it's, it goes, it's by component, so maybe what we ought to do is, those commission members who had a, had those component sections, look at those sections of the land use, and make whatever changes you think are necessary, and we'll talk about it next time.
That's your idea.
Thank you.
All right? Everybody remember what they, what components they had?
Yeah, it's real easy, I didn't have any.
Just finish mine.
I'd be happy to dig into something if somebody would love me.
You can do...
Be careful what you ask for.
You could do population, no, you can do property rights. Want to do property rights?
Okay.
What did Josh have, did he ever do any chapters?
No.
He had this one, actually.
He had this and housing.
He had community design, or somebody had community design, I ended up...
He had housing and public utilities and services.
All right, so you, I'll tell you what, you get property rights and community design.
Property rights and community design.
Those are two that I had. No, no, I still have, I still have population.
Gonna be nice to the chair. And Randy?
A really good resource for that is the, one of the, I have a regulatory tape, exactly, Mike. Charlie Jones.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. We've already, we've already done that, so there's, what you have to do is you have to look at the goals, objectives, and policies for the company. And you have to look at the component itself.
As we have.
As we have done it.
Right.
As we have drafted it.
Okay.
So the, the assignment is...
It's linked.
Assignment, as I envisioned it, is that you look at the component, which we've already had approved by the county commissioners, and you, and you modify the land use section that deals with that component to make it correlate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Don't have to go back and do any more research.
Sure. I thought we were doing that as we...
Well, we were thinking.
No.
As you were going.
Right.
But we haven't done the exercise to change the language in, to make a new, an updated land use component.
Okay.
Back to natural resources.
All right, so, Jenna, we have, all right, so we should have on the agenda next time, a report on the... Go ahead.
Do we wanna also review the implementation section to see if it modifies the goals and policies and objectives? Or do you wanna tackle that after?
Well, let's, let's see how this works, because I think that may lead into the goals, objectives, and policies, if we wanna make changes. As I, as I said, I think you should, in reviewing the land use, you should look at the goals, objectives, policies, and the components, and make sure that they're trashy, and then the land, the...
Chapter 14 stays or goes? Chapter 14 and natural res, this, not natural resources, public utilities and services, does it stay or go?
Go.
Go, okay.
When in doubt, take it out.
Surgeon.
We shouldn't have that as our mantra from the beginning.
I think that is our mantra. All right, so, we're going to, so on the next meeting, we have the, we should have a report on the short-term analysis. We should have a workshop on public services. We should have a discussion. So the public, public services component, I think, that'll be a, a public workshop, right?
Not yet.
Not yet? We just did it.
So, we just have to do the natural resources as a, as a workshop next time.
All right, so we'll bring them both back as workshops next time?
Yeah.
And we'll also discuss land use?
Not natural resources.
Natural resources, I think it's the 19.
Yeah, I need time to work on it.
Okay, so that's the 19th, so then we'll just, so we're not gonna deal with natural resources at all next time?
No, we can deal with it, we can look at it, but I'll have, I'll have it updated.
As a public workshop.
Yeah, not as a...
We've looked at it enough, we don't need to look at it again unless you've got...
Well, I think, I think we should.
Yeah, just one.
Even if it's just 10 or 12 minutes.
For scheduling, I just, I thought we discussed the natural resources was going to be a mission discussion workshop as an entire component on the bed, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And public services.
And public services, same, same thing, the entire component, both public on it.
And land use.
All three?
Well, well, we'll continue to discuss land use, I don't know, we're ready to have a, oh, I don't know.
No, land use, that's...
Land use is new.
That's not, that's not a public, you, you were saying public at workshops, right?
For sure.
No, no.
The first two?
There are no public workshops.
No, not public. Mission discussion, but as a whole, not...
Okay, okay, gotcha.
So, Jake, anything else for the new pastor?
The only other update I have is that we, we made some changes to our staff in, so I got rid of all of our permit technicians and made them planning technicians. So, the difference is they, they handle administrative land use files, so just kind of an update on staff on. We did not fill the empty planner position that was dedicated to Tyson Lewis earlier this year. And then we're, we had an admin three position that we decided not to fill. So, we've seen a decline throughout this last year in the number of land use applications, so we're reacting to that. Kind of a heads up, we're seeing what, compared to last year, we're seeing about... 20% drop in BOPs.
Yeah, about 80%, kind of across the board, just in total number of land use files, but about 60% compared to 21. So, so 21 was the peak, starting to see it come down. Obviously, you know, it was the same, it was about the same increase every year, starting from about 21. It's a 2020, 21, 21 being the peak, so.
Kind of falls at interest rate, doesn't it?
We've also seen like a significant decline in any file that would go before a hearing. Especially anything that would go before a board hearing. These, like the compliance map amendments and zone changes, we've seen a pretty steep decline in zone changes this calendar year. So I think we're only at like four or five, six.
That's a great point, Matt, you brought up the interest rate, but also code amendments, so when we got rid of the contiguous MLDs, we've also seen a drastic drop in MLDs as well. But we're seeing an increase in a few other land use files, and steady still across the board with variances as a whole.
Yeah, we got a lot less, a lot less speculatory.
Jen, I have a question.